It is 9:31. I am convening today's city council meeting. Councillors, we have a very, very, very packed agenda and a hard stop at 1:30 so that our staff can have a half an hour before we start our budget work this afternoon. So I'm going to try to move us through quickly. I do want to just flag for folks before we get started that at the end of the meeting today, we will recess until tomorrow at 2:00 PM when we will reconvene as the council to hear the insight survey. This afternoon, we will open a meeting as the Budget Committee at 2:00 PM through 6:30 with a break in the middle there. And then we will also reconvene as the Budget Committee tomorrow afternoon to hear Prosper Portland's budget. So we will have two council and two Budget Committee meetings in the next two days. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Canal?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Koyamalene?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Novick?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Avalos?
Present.
Dunphy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Pertilginny?
Here.
And Linley, could you please go over the rules of order and decorum?
Good morning. Welcome to Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. Individuals may testify for three minutes unless the presiding officer states otherwise, or your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The presiding officer preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. If you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. And virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls their name. Thank you, President.
Thank you so much. Councillors, the first item on the agenda, our agenda approval, are there any requests to amend or reorder today's agenda? Councillor Dunphy?
Yeah, thank you, colleagues. I would ask to move item 21 up between items 13 and 14. I note that 14 through 20 are being heard together as a conversation around fees. Item 21 is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance around the fair wage policy. I would, I do not intend to take 30 minutes, though it is scheduled for 30 minutes, and I would like your consent to move that up.
Second.
Councillors, are there any objections? Rebecca, could you please note that reordering of the agenda? And I will try to remember that when we get there, Councillor Dunphy. Please remind me if I don't. Councillors, are there any other requests to amend or reorder the agenda? Do I have unanimous consent to approve the agenda as amended? I see a lot of head nods and no objections. The next item on our agenda is public communications. Rebecca, could you please call up our first guest? First is Lauren Quarter. Welcome, Lauren. Go ahead and introduce yourself for the record. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Quarter. I am here on behalf of the Cattrell CPO, the primary opponent to the siting of the city's water treatment plant in rural East County. I've testified here since 2018, when council approved the Water Bureau's preferred treatment option for crypto in the site location at southeast Carpenter Lane. Council formally committed to the most expensive treatment option and the most expensive location. This is now the largest infrastructure project in the city's history. The price has grown 400% from $500 million to over $2 billion, an estimate that has not been updated in over a year. You face the very situation we warned council about seven years ago. The city arrogantly pushed forward, ignoring our warnings that Carpenter Lane isn't zoned for industrial use. Instead of engaging with us or questioning our repeated testimonies, council relied solely on the Water Bureau, which misled council and the public. In 2018, the Bureau's principal engineer, David Peters, claimed, quote, "They should be able to get through land use" at Carpenter Lane. In May 2024, Commissioner Maps asked then Director Solmer if the feds are mandating filtration, and she falsely testified before council, quote, "We have to do this absolutely." Treatment is federally required. Filtration is not. This project, built on half-truths, will leave ratepayers with the most expensive water in this country. I have questions each of you must seriously consider as this runaway project continues. Did you know that the OHA bilateral compliance agreement can be renegotiated? Construction is paused by the State Land Use Board of Appeals because the natural resource impacts were not carefully considered. The Bureau proceeded with construction in 2024 during an appeal. Previous council approved the Bureau to proceed with the preferred contractors, not with competitive bids. Costs will exceed over $2 billion due to loan servicing and budget overages. The pipeline is estimated at half a billion dollars because of the terrain's technical challenges and the four miles of pipe needed because it is far off conduit. The current pause is costing the city beyond its scope. It is a full treatment facility, not just filtration, beyond what is needed. You could pivot now, install something you actually need, and save over $1 billion. The city spearheaded Senate Bill 936 to supersede land use law for this pet project. The city has destroyed over 400 trees in East County and compromised sensitive habitat and natural resources. This far exceeds the impact of the PGE Forest Park proposal. Our community has fought for seven years, and we are winning. And we are not going away. We will not let you continue to threaten our safety and destroy our farmland, our wetlands, trees, habitat, fish and wildlife, surface water, and groundwater. I hope this council can critically think about this. It's time. Mayor Wilson called filtration one of the top priorities of 2025. Instead of accepting the Bureau's half-truths, I encourage you to really learn about this project. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have James Lee. Thank you for being with us this morning.
I'm James Bernard Lee. I reside in southeast Portland and speak only for myself. Thank you for hearing me today. In dealing with me, you're dealing as one of the better physicists of the 20th century. I'm not well-known because I work in what is held to be a sideline of mainstream physics, acoustics of concert halls. But beware, two Nobel laureates, Lord Raleigh in the 19th century and Richard Feynman in the 20th, sought the problems of waves in three-dimensional space too difficult. Had I known that at St. Mary's College in 1955 and at the Naval Ordinance Test Station China Lake in 1962, I should avoided, should have avoided the topic as a subject for graduate research. Leo Baranek, a genius at physics of waves, fumbled design of New York Philharmonic Hall so badly that 60 years and three B.E. buildings later, the hall remains problematic. The nub, since 1900 orthodox acoustics is held, one need not invoke the physics of waves in design of concert halls. Leo thoroughly embraced that blatant fallacy with dire result. In 1968-69, during graduate studies at the University of Sydney, I revisited the problem and reformulated it from the beginning. In 1970, the nut cracked and the cornucopia of knowledge flowed forth. By 1974, the paper I am giving you resolved the issue elegantly via the second law of summer dynamics. It anticipated the idea of a holographic principle of Leonard Susskind, associated with Stephen Hawking, by 20 years. We must build a proper concert hall and a proper opera house in the northeast quadrant of downtown, leading the necessary rehabilitation. Pioneer Place and others there are hurting. These projects will put 5,000 new pairs of feet downtown weeknights, 10,000 weekends. I know how to do that. Work with me, and we shall realize them. I want to point out that Councilor Ryan and I have discussed this last year at some length. And I also discussed it briefly with Mayor Wilson at a campaign event last summer. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, James, for sharing that information. Do we have that paper from you electronically, or has it been submitted to the clerk?
I'll be submitting it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next is Wade Lang. Wade Lang. We have Richard Elmeyer. Welcome, Richard. Thank you for being here.
My name is Richard Elmeyer. For many years, I participated in the annual city-sponsored priority-based budgeting exercise. We became well-educated in the process and value of priority-based budgeting by ranking and assigning dollar values to many dozens of specific programs within and among each bureau, ostensibly to influence city commissioners. However, since the job of city commissioners was to protect their own bureaus, our promised efforts of influence to city commissioners was a sham, but not a waste of our time because we learned how to do priority-based budgeting. Priority-based budgeting prioritizes programs and services over departments, enabling a focused allocation of resources based on relative importance. Priority-based budgeting directs funding towards higher-value services while scaling back or eliminating lower-value ones during periods of relative decline. Governor John Kitzhobber effectively used priority-based budgeting when faced with declining funding, the Oregon Health Plan. Since 2008, more than 300 local governments have applied priority-based budgeting. Cities like Falstaff, Arizona, Battle Creek, Michigan, and Corvallis, Oregon have used priority budgeting. The National League of Cities mentions that 80% of cities prioritize aligning budgets with priority outcomes. The same budgeting process can and should be used in Portland. Priority-based budgeting is progressive. Status quo budgeting is just tinkering with the mayor's priorities, not yours. There is no individual accountability, only group accountability, which is no accountability at all. You were elected with progressive, ranked choice of voting. Now you need to show progressive leadership by moving on to progressive, priority-based budgeting. Finally, with a budget shortfall of about $1,100 million, it would not be just failure of due diligence, but actual malfeasance to purposefully neglect holding Metro accountable to establishing publicly-vetted regional homeless and housing policy and plans for which Metro would be accountable for executing and paying for, thereby lowering, if not eliminating, Portland's homeless and housing budgets. Portlanders voted for transparency and accountability. Give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today, Richard. Thank you for being here. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Nadia Steck. Hello, esteemed members of the city council. I am here to bring attention to the fact that the inexperience and naivety of our current mayor and this administration is hurdling our city toward a cliff of our most vulnerable citizens are going to deal with the ramifications of. Mayor Wilson campaigned on a clear promise of being able to resolve homelessness with a bold new approach. But after the dust of the election had settled and he was allowed to begin to govern, he showed just how dangerous his ideas are. While the initial plan seemed to address the cause with the impetus it requires, the mayor's plan couldn't be more flawed. Multnomah County is slashing the homeless service budget by 22% in the coming fiscal year, and the mayor has proposed a radical restructuring of the way the remaining budget is utilized. Shifting focus to increasing access to overnight shelters by establishing new shelters sounds good, but is being done at the cost of reducing the city's reliance on intermediate and long-term care facilities. This change is tragic for two reasons. One, overnight shelters are notoriously dangerous. Members of the homeless community have spoken out about the violence, theft, and sexual assaults that have occurred in these facilities for years because even one well-funded, they are overwhelmed with demand and lack proper staffing to ensure safety and the services for the sometimes hundreds of residents sleeping in a single common area. Second, this shift will focus will actually make homelessness a stickier problem. This is because intermediate and long-term shelters, like safe rest villages, have been shown to not only be far safer, but also have been shown to be one of the best intermediary steps to getting someone off the streets. As well, the policy change that claims to make sure no one will get turned away from services is a good edict, but unfortunately is being used to destroy culturally-specific shelters. Places like the Bi-Poc and Queer Affinity Villages, which service quintessential safe havens for the already marginalized and provide key peace of mind to their residents that while they are in this time of crisis, they can at least feel safe from some level of bigotry. The opening of services has rendered it so these villages can no longer screen for culturally-specific residents, functionally destroying their intended goal. In our current political climate, when violence against so many groups is on the rise and being actively called for by the executive branch of this nation, should we not take the steps to ensure that our black and brown neighbors can feel safe while they rest? Is it not vile to make sure our homeless, trans, and queer residents know that they can simply exist without harassment? The entire action plan proposed months ago by the mayor's office drifts with the form of toxic liberalism, bad outcomes wrapped in good intentions and pretty words. The simple fact is, the actions proposed to be taken by the city will worsen our homelessness crisis and actively lead to more disenfranchised people being exposed to suffering and violence. Shame on this council and shame on the mayor for promising the population of Portland a solution to a problem that you are only going to actively make worse. We, as a citizenry, deserve solutions that actually attempt to help our residents instead of further funding the Portland Police Bureau so it can better pay its massive legal fees for its cost of brutality and abuse of power. Maybe next year, Mayor Wilson will simply pay individual officers a bonus for every homeless person they harass and kill. It would probably cost the taxpayers less and functionally ride the same level of efficacy that his current plan offers.
Thank you for sharing those concerns. Okay, councillors, the next item on our agenda is our time-certain agenda. Rebecca, could you please read agenda item number three for us?
Consider appeal by Forest Park Neighborhood Association and Forest Park Conservancy against the hearing officer's decision to approve with conditions an environmental review, conditional use review, and two Greenway reviews for the upgrade and expansion of transmission lines in Forest Park.
Thank you. Councillors, as a reminder, we have heard this item and made a tentative vote because it is a report. Today, we will vote on the, we will take our final vote. We originally heard this land use appeal on April 17, and at that time, council held a public hearing and tentatively voted 12 to 0 to grant the appeal and overturn the decision of the hearings officer. We also directed staff to return with findings and a decision to reflect that tentative vote, and those findings are what we have before us in the report today. I am looking for a motion and a second to grant the appeal, overturn the hearings officer decision, and approve the environmental review as included in the findings in the report before us today. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Rebecca, I think that was councillors Avalos and Dunphy. Could you please call the roll? Oh, Councillor Canal, are you in the queue for discussion?
Is that a question?
Okay.
Are we obligated to disclose, or should we do this in our vote, any additional ex parte?
That is a good question. Linley, if folks have had additional ex parte communications since the original hearing, should those be disclosed before we move to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't have that written down. So councillors, if you have, there are three categories, I believe we look for, ex parte communication?
Conflicts of interest or site visits.
So if you've had any additional ex parte communication, conflicts of interest, or site visits since the hearing on April 17, can you please put yourself in the queue to disclose those? Councillor Canal?
Thank you. Yeah, I have no additional conflicts of interest or site visits. On the ex parte side, I've received additional dozens, if not hundreds, more people about this topic since the preliminary vote. Once again, have not read them and had my staff handle it. I did meet two PGE staff at a Friends of Trees event, but did not discuss this particular project beyond the acknowledgement that we could not do so. Having reviewed what I missed when switching from in-person attendance to virtual attendance and therefore having reviewed the full record, I am prepared today to make a fair and impartial decision based on the criteria and the evidence in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we've all received some of that communication, as long as we have not opened them. Do folks need to individually declare that?
No. If folks have not looked at that, if only his staff has seen it and dealt with it, you do not need to. It is not an ex parte contact. So the one thing I would ask is, because we've, Commissioner Canal, I almost heard you as saying you don't, didn't have ex parte contacts, you're actually just saying there was the stuff that happened and I did not review or receive any additional out-of-record evidence. And if you did have ex parte contacts, we need to ask if people want to ask you questions about the ex parte contacts. So just trying to make sure I understand your disclosure.
Correct. And at your earlier advice, I disclosed that, you know, I did step out of the meeting and switch to virtual attendance last time. And so there was a hiccup of, you know, some seconds between those two, and you had advised that I disclose that and say that I've reviewed that subsequent to the preliminary meeting, and I needed to do that at some point. So I figured I'd just do that together here.
I think we're good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Novick?
I saw that I was receiving a number of emails that I did not read, saying opposing PGE. I also did see one email from a friend of mine, former Chief Justice Tom Bommer, and I did glance at it. It said something to the effect of, for God's sakes, show some leadership, clearly supporting the PGE application.
Linley, is that ex parte communication or?
Yes. And so we can just ask if anybody wishes to question Councillor Novick about his ex parte communication.
If anybody has questions for Councillor Novick, please come up to the table. Okay, seeing none, we'll hold that and move to Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did receive emails I didn't read, but I received a text from a friend urging me to support PGE.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. Are there any questions for Councillor Clark? Okay, and I have put myself in the queue. I received a number of questions about my initial vote from mainly folks who work with labor unions who had been supportive of the vote. It was not a discussion of the facts, but rather questions about that vote. I repeated to them what I had said on the dais in the public record already, and no more than that. And if there are any questions for me, folks can come ahead to the table. Okay, we'll move on to Councillor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe it was April 29. I was at a town hall hosted by the Portland Metro Chamber, and a question was asked about this decision, and my response was, I am in ex parte, and I'm not going to discuss this case.
Are there any questions for Councillor Green? Okay. Councillors, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Rebecca, can you please call the roll? Canal?
Nothing to add from my preliminary vote. I'll just save time and vote aye.
Canal, pardon. Ryan?
I go after Councillor Canal, and I've never experienced that. This was a tough call. We all know we need investments for electrification infrastructure, and many of you that are supporting the, I think, the affirmative decision today have been here actually to lobby on that. And we all want to protect precious infrastructure of our tree canopy, the ecosystem of Forest Park. So for me, the question to ask is, what is acceptable power plan for our region when the population will continue to grow? So here we are with this difficult trade-off conversation, debate, and I know it's going to continue. I don't think we went deep enough into this debate, and I welcome that conversation soon and often. I also just want to say finally, I was a little concerned about, I was concerned about some of the mean-spirited comments towards the hard-working public servant, the hearings officer, and going forward, I hope that we'll respect the objectivity and the difficult job that they have. For today, I support the appeal. Aye.
Koyamalene?
Hi. Mario? No? Thank you. I think the, I'll keep it brief, but the crux of my decision on this case really was that part of PGE's assertion in their analysis was that this is going to be beneficial for climate issues in the long run. And when asked for data on how they have actually measured the cost of cutting the trees versus expanding our electrical grid, which is something we talk about often in the Climate Committee, they were unable to produce any evidence that there is going to be a material carbon reduction. And I think especially in a time where we are expanding data centers for AI, there is no guarantee that that energy is not going to be used in other ways. So based on everything I heard, I vote aye.
Novick?
I'm afraid that I'm going to have to speak at greater length than my colleagues would want. I think that in upholding this appeal, we might very well be making a disastrous decision for our quality of life, for our economy, and for reaching our climate goals. Unfortunately, I don't think the PGE has left us much choice. My vote is based almost entirely on PGE's failure to demonstrate a need for this project. I think it's quite possible they could have demonstrated the need for this project, but they didn't. I feel compelled to read a section from PGE's revised application, and I apologize, my computer has now died, so I need to revive it. PGE says on page 13 of their revised application, "Recent electricity demand forecasts have increased substantially due to several factors, including vehicle electrification, peak summer temperature increases, increasing adoption of residential air conditioning, and industrial growth." And then there's a few other sentences, and then it says, "Based on current power supply models, the current system configuration is insufficient to meet the peak demands forecast in 2028. Several recent articles highlight the concern with transmission capacity and the increasing peak power demand," parentheses, "more 2022." That's basically it. What I would have expected is for PGE to explain how the power supply models work, explain why they've been accurate in the past, elaborate on the factors contributing to an increasing demand for electricity, elaborate on why the current configuration will not work as of 2028, maybe explain who "more" is and attach "more" as article and some of the other articles, but they didn't. I would also, picking up on what Councillor Mario just said, I would also have expected them to have quantified answers to the question of what is the impact on climate? For example, hypothetically, if the typical mature tree absorbed 40 pounds of carbon per year, and the typical gas-powered vehicle emitted 10,000 pounds of carbon per year, and the typical electric vehicle emitted 5,000 pounds of carbon per year, if all those things were true, then if our failure to approve PGE's proposal resulted in five fewer cars switching from gas to electric, then that would more than offset the impact of losing 400 trees. But as Councillor Mario pointed out, PG did not make such a case. I personally, there obviously are other criteria to be considered. My views on whether PG met those criteria might differ in some respect for some of my colleagues, but I want to say that personally, if PG wished to re-present this project with better evidence, I obviously can't say how I would vote, but I'd certainly be willing to listen. I also want to say, since I'm beating up in PGE, that I was not impressed by some of the comments by the appellant's either. Scott Fogarty, representing the appellant's, at one point said, let me get the quote, "Rolling blackouts? I ask, when does this happen in Portland?" Well, we haven't had an earthquake in Portland either in our memory. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen. We haven't had a nuclear war. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen. So I just had to express my concern about that language. That being said, I vote to accept the appeal.
Clark?
Thank you. I have to agree with some of my colleagues' comments, Councillor Novick. I would say one of the other issues that I found compelling was that, when learning that the Forest Park Plan has the force of law. And many of us, I think, came into that hearing with a very open mind, and I'll just say with that, I'm voting yes to uphold.
Green?
We're going to be faced with a lot of land use decisions on the question of how we prepare our grid for a green energy future, so I came into this with an open mind. I was moved by testimony that demonstrated on the record that Portland General Electric failed to demonstrate a need to the Oregon Public Utility Commission in the Integrated Resource Plan that provided... Resource Plan that provided the basis for this application. So if the Oregon Public Utility Commission found that PG was, provided substandard or insufficient evidence, that to me shows that we can't in good conscience grant this right-of-way. So it's not about being against renewable energy or reliability, it's about whether or not the applicant has demonstrated a need, and they did not. So with that, I vote aye.
Zimmerman.
Thanks. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. So I did not feel that the application of a practical versus an impractical alternative was applied correctly by the hearings officer, nor was the case made by PGE. And I have similar concerns about whether or not this is problematic in terms of our growth as a city and our electrification and our move toward being more resilient. I think it's probably not. But the application of law and not policy is what is at question here, and I don't think that they met the standard of law. We can question whether or not that forest management plan needs to be changed, but as it stands now, from a quadlet judicial, I would vote yea to grant the appeal.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hertleguine.
I agree with many of the comments that my colleagues have made and share their concerns about the policy implications before us. But again, we are not making a decision on the policy implications. I would simply add to what's already been said, that had we seen the full scale of the project, there might have been an argument for the idea that other paths weren't feasible. There might have been an argument about the need. But we didn't see the full project. We just saw this phase. And based on this phase, those standards were not met. I vote aye.
With 12 ayes, the findings are adopted. Thank you, counselors. The next item on our agenda is the committee referral report. Since our last council meeting, there have been a number of referrals, including authorizing the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Southwest Capitol Hill Road and Southwest Troy Street Sidewalk Infill Project, authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the Northeast Columbia, Cully Boulevard, and Alderwood Road Intersection Improvements Project, to the Finance Committee, amend Council Organization and Procedure Code to include Council Rule on Tie-Breaking to the Governance Committee, and reappoint Jill Crop and Peggy Moretti to the Development Review Advisory Committee, sent to the Homelessness and Housing Committee. That appears to be all that's on the list right now. I think we may have captured all of the others at our last meeting. The next item on our agenda is the City Administrator Report. Administrator Jordan, oh, Counselor Smith?
Yes. Thank you. I want to go back to the committee and referral report. Could you please clarify the criterion process used to determine which items that pass into the committee report that are included in the committee referral, because there were other things that were approved that were not put on the report?
What is on the committee referral report are items that have been referred to committees since our last council meeting.
Okay.
So this has nothing to do with whether or not they have been, whether they have been put on agenda or not, whether they have been heard or not, if they have been moved to a committee since the last council meeting they're here. In the future, when we have things coming with a little more lead time, we may see things on the committee referral report that are not actually scheduled in committee for a few weeks or even a month afterwards. But this allows us to draw attention to what has been sent to committees, so that people can start to pay attention to what might be coming.
Thank you. My staff, we were trying to figure that out last night, and I didn't have the answer to it. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. We're moving to the City Administrator Report. City Administrator Jordan is out today, but we have the Assistant City Administrator joining us instead. Annie, go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, counselors. As the Council President said, unfortunately, City Administrator Jordan is out today with the flu, so sitting in with him. This is a second of a series of monthly reports from the City Administrator to council. We'll do these the first council meeting of every month. Thanks. The intention of these updates is to share high-level operational updates about the city administration. This is very much still a work in progress, so we welcome all feedback and suggestions of how we can continue to develop this, so it reflects what's most helpful for the council. You have a very large agenda today, so in the interest of time, I'm going to skip giving you the overview per service area, but you have that in writing, that report, and it's posted. So please feel free to review that and forward along any questions you have. One thing I did want to mention, as a part of these monthly reports, this will be a way for us to deliver on some of the council requests that we get. So you have some supplementary documents in there. The first is a report that outlines recently paid insurance, I'm sorry, settlement claims under $50,000. The second is a grant snapshot of active federal and non-federal grants. And the third we're currently working on, which is a revenue report. So we'll have that, once we get a little more refined information of exactly what you would like to see, we'll have that here in the months coming ahead. So happy to answer any questions, but also would like to give you the time back for your agenda today.
Thank you. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue with a question?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here and addressing some of the issues. I have a few questions. I think this is important. This is what we want to see in, maybe in the future, we could have a longer time period to discuss some of the things that you have in here. But the first thing that I wanted to talk about, it's on the active non-federal grant snapshot. And I'm looking at this, in the column that says, "Unspent Active Non-Federal Grant Funds" outlined in the City Administrator's report, are these monies considered general funds or restricted? Go to 117.
Yeah. We have Jonas Bury, DCA, who might be able to answer that for you.
Welcome, Jonas.
Great, thank you, and apologies as I catch up, Counselor, to your question. I want to get to the-
It's on the last page of the active non-federal grant snapshot. Is there a-
Yeah, I'm sorry. And could you repeat the question? I apologize.
So the question was, the money that's in the unspent balance, are those monies considered general funds, or are they considered restricted?
Yeah, so generally, those would be, I believe, all considered restricted, because they're tied specifically to being used for the purposes for which the grants were applied for.
And since we were not told, for example, the first line, City Administrator, $10 million, we don't know, we would appreciate a report that has a line item that says, where did that $10 million come from? Because I would be able to tell better if it was restricted or non-restricted. And the reason why I say that that might be something different, that it may not be restricted, because you put the federal grants, which are restricted, on a different page. So I'm assuming that this is general fund or can be used for various different purposes.
Yeah, Counselor, appreciate the feedback. We'll work on refining some of the information here. I mean, generally, the grants that are going to be listed here are for very specific purposes and not with general flexibility around it. But I appreciate the need to make this a little more clear, and we'll work on that for future-
And you may not, thank you so much. But you may not know the answer to this question. On February 19th, I introduced a 9/12 amendment requiring the City Administrator to submit a report of all unassigned funds for the recent fiscal year. And I appreciate you saying that you're going to come back every month. But in that ordinance that passed, it required you to come every 15 days, no longer than 15 days if there were unassigned funds that were brought into the city of Portland. And so I'm trying, so my question is, is that satisfying? Are you giving this report to satisfy that particular ordinance?
Counselor, what we've discussed with the City Administrator was that they would bring those reports forward every 15 days, as required in the ordinance that we passed, but that there are other dollars that come into the city, and that this report on a monthly basis would be an opportunity for us to eventually have a view into every dollar coming into the city in the past month, even beyond those required in the ordinance.
Correct.
So this report should, the information contained here, should grow over time, as Jonas is able to add more and more to that for us.
Madam President, I understand what you're saying, but I need them to tell me, because it's very important, because this report says as of 3/31/2025. And we've received unassigned monies since February 19th, and we have not received a report within 15 days. And so what I'm saying is, I need you all, regardless of what other things you're doing, to give us reporting, but you need to adhere to that ordinance. When monies come in, you have 15 days to give that to us. Not a spring bump, not a fall bump. Give it to us 15 days upon receipt. And so that's the question that I'm asking. That's why I need you to desegregate these dollars, so I can see where they're coming from. I don't know where they're coming from. It's $132 million that's in that unspent balance. And so my last question is, are any of these monies, Jonas, baked into the mayor's budget?
I don't know under the hood here, but I would, any of the dollars that are for currently, any of these dollars that are grants that fund projects that extend into next fiscal year would be included in the budget, because we have to authorize those expenditures.
Right. And that's why it's so important for you all to desegregate this data. I know you're in this kind of rhythm over the years, not identifying or desegregating data, but you have to desegregate this data, so we can tell whether or not we can use it for now, for 2024, '25, '25, '26, if this is going to be the initial beginning balance for '25, '26. So this is, for me, this looks like fair game to me. And I want to ask you this last thing. Can you get us the desegregated data this week? We only have, like, 10 days before we can do this budget on the 21st. And if I don't know what this category of money, it's hanging out there, I don't know what I can do with it or not. And whether it's restricted or not, I can identify opportunities for those restricted funds.
Counselor, appreciate that. Absolutely work on improving this for future, and we'll see what we can do to get that information as soon as possible.
Can I get this in the next 10 days?
I will do what I can. I don't know. I need to talk to the folks who manage the data. I'm sure it's available, and we'll do our absolute best to get that to council as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And we have a lot of questions related to the budget. This is an important one as well.
Yes, this is very critical. Thank you.
Jonas, in order to not lose sight of this, since the Counselor asked for it within 10 days, which is a long time as we do this budget work, could you get an update to us about whether or not you think that's possible early next week?
I'm going to go check right now and see what is feasible. Again, I know we're going to have budget conversation later today that'll also identify a handful of time-sensitive questions. So I just want to be realistic about the body of work that we have in front of us here, but obviously, I want to get you all what you need as soon as possible. So yeah, this will be-
I don't know if Ruth is here.
I don't believe she's in the room right now, but she will be-
But there are all sorts of reports that you can run.
Correct.
And at any second, I was being very generous when I said 10 days. But we should be able to get this by close of business, because you should be able to run a report to see where these dollars came from.
Just do this for me.
Counselor Canal.
Thank you, Madam President. I have four notes here. First, to Assistant City Administrator, just a thank you to you and to Administrator Jordan for providing information on the sub-$50,000 claims. My request would be to restore what was in last month's report, which was the individual claims in addition to the summary, and to update the summary so that it includes all claims, not just the $50,000 ones. In other words, individual claims under $50,000, summary of all claims, using the same framework as the report here. Comment, and then two questions on the content. First, I want to quote from the report about the PPB operation. Alongside partner agencies like the FBI and DEA seized 44 pounds of fentanyl powder, more than 2,500 fentanyl pills, and 22 pounds of meth during a month-long fentanyl enforcement operation. I'm grateful to see this enumerated. We have a lot of things that are controversial in this city, especially around policing. And one thing that is, in my experience, widely popular, in fact, a near consensus, is police drug interdiction operations. So I'm grateful to see that mentioned here as a win here. My two questions, and I think the first is going to be to you and the second to DCA Bury. First, can you clarify that the Street Services Coordination Center's reunification program, which is mentioned on page, I believe, page one, is voluntary? I've heard that said verbally outside of this chamber, but I don't think I've seen that in writing or had it on the record here.
Whether the participants in that program, whether it's voluntary?
Correct.
Let me get an answer on that. But my understanding is, yes, this is voluntary, and this is a service that we're providing. Over the last month, from what I understand, we had eight folks take us up on that offer voluntarily, for whatever met their needs at the time.
Right.
But happy to get more information for you, absolutely.
Thank you. And then my last comment, just want to follow up on Counselor Smith's line of questioning, but on the other side of it, which is the non-federal grants, specific to vibrant communities. This is the very last table in the report. Most of the other service areas have less than half of their total awards that are noted here falling into the unspent balance. In the case of vibrant communities, $30.1 million of the $35.2 million are unspent. That's a very large percentage. And with that service area proposed for merger into the other service areas, I want to ask this now, while there's someone to ask, what are those grants?
Yeah, Counselor, I don't know the answer to that. And again, I think having that gradient level of detail will help illuminate that. We'll obviously have opportunities for more conversations on the budgets. I'm happy to come back and get that detail for you as we have those conversations.
Great. So then, just to give clarity to the question, I'd love to know what those are and what's going to happen to them in terms of the management and accountability over it if there is no longer a vibrant community service area. That's, I think, following up as well on all of Counselor Smith's questions, the same ones apply here. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Avalos. And Jonas, I know we have a few more questions for you, so if you can stay up there, that'd be great.
Of course.
Counselor Avalos?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but as I'm looking at my questions, I think my larger ask instead is, I want to understand, what are we going to be doing in the future with these reports? Because what you guys present to us is really important, rich data that you're getting from the bureaus, but not all the bureau's leaders are here. I don't expect that, you know, the City Administrator is going to have the level of detail to the kind of questions I want to ask. And so I guess I just want to ask a broader, like, can we discuss what will it look like in the future? Because if this is going to be the main place where we're going to be able to weigh in on what the city, how the city has been operating, and ideally have space to ask questions about what's in the report, it feels insufficient to not have people here available to answer those, and then therefore, where will those questions be? Of course, I could ask them offline, but that defeats the purpose of bringing to light and having public transparency around our responsibility to oversee, you know, making sure we're overseeing the executive branch, and that essentially, the executive branch is implementing the policies, that is our responsibility to propose. So I'm going to hold my specific questions, but my larger ask is that we discuss what this process looks like in the future, so it can be a more involved process, and we could actually have our questions answered. So I'll just leave it at that for now. And if you have a comment, you can-
Yeah, thank you so much for that suggestion. And I might request, we can look at a number of options to address that, but maybe one thing we might do, if there are questions specific, to send those in advance, we'd be happy to be prepared and have folks in the room ready to dive a little deeper for you. If there are other ways, we can have that available, too. Really open to suggestions of how we do that. Thank you.
And Counselor, I hear that request. Originally, this report was put together as an overview of what had been happening, so that we could then follow up offline about things that we needed more information about. If counselors on the whole want to have a discussion about the report, then we'll need to build in more time for that in our agendas. Right now, it's just built in for high-level questions that we need to ask to get clarification, so that we can do our follow-up. And I am happy to check in with you and maybe one or two others offline to see if we want to shift that approach and give more time to a discussion of what's been happening in the city on our agendas. As with everything, as we have conversations about what is on our agendas, that will require some trade-offs and shortening time on other agenda items. some trade-offs and shortening time on other agenda items. Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. So going back to the unspent balance on the last page for active non-federal grant snapshot, $132 million out of $276, $277 million. So it sounds great to get grants because that generally sounds like other people's money, but I want to ask just a finer point, Mr. Berry. Is there a possibility that the 132 million, which we are calling likely restricted, is also grants from ourselves, like PSEF, to other bureaus or other city functions?
That is a great question. I don't know whether PSEF is included in that total, but we'll follow up and clarify in the future.
That would be helpful when you do. I know that you're going to do a lot for the other counselors' questions, but restricted and unrestricted is an important term in nonprofit and in government giving. I will refuse to apply that same standard to our own money. It is, it is our fund, and how we apply it is not restricted. So that will be helpful to understand when this comes out, whether or not when PSEF or others are granting, if they're actually able to deliver the projects. And when I say they, I mean us as the city. Can we deliver the projects that we have another, another fund trying to fund? So thank you for that. And that's my only question there, Madam President.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah. I think we're all just basically saying if the report was in the Friday memo, Friday morning, that would really help a lot. And then we could have dialogue before the meeting with all of you. So I think that's what you're hearing loud and clear. I was troubled a little bit by the language we were using earlier, so I'm just kind of piling on on a couple other counselors' comments. So restricted is when we receive money from, say, the federal government. So it's a pass-through. It's not our money. It's a pass-through. That's restricted. Money that comes from our coffers can be designated, but not restricted. I think it's really, I think it's important that we distinguish between those two. So designated is not the same weight as the contract agreement that we had with the state or the federal government. So I just wanted to make that clear. So we need better clarity on that, and then the columns need to be applied appropriately. So I know you were just called up here at the last second, but I think any of us that have been CEOs for large organizations where you work with auditors once a year, they will make that point really clear, and I know you know that as well. So I just want to clarify that for the record. And those include what has been discussed. The Arts Office Civic Life has quite a few grants that are in that category, and they're designated. I do think that the PSEF question is a little more murky, and that'll be a great discussion. And then we have the children's levy, which is restricted because it's a lockbox that comes from the, from the voters. So we have those restricted accounts within the city that were set up formally with the contract with the voters. Thanks.
Counselor Smith, did you have an additional comment? I will note that we're four minutes over time on this agenda item.
Okay, Madam President, I will hold my question and send an email.
Thank you. I apologize. We are moving on, counselors, to the consent agenda. Rebecca, I believe we have had items pulled from the consent agenda. Can you give us an update?
Two items are pulled. Item six, appoint Matthew Sanchez and Vessel Lee to the Urban Forestry Commission for terms to end March 31st, 2029. And item seven, confirm appointments and alternates to the city's Sustainability and Climate Commission.
Thank you. That leaves one item on the consent agenda. Item eight, could you please call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda?
Knoll.
Aye.
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 Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea.
Aye. And Rebecca, I'm sorry, I was remiss in not saying item six and seven will be placed at the end of the agenda. Thank you, counselors. We are now moving on to the beginning of our regular agenda. Rebecca, can you please read Agenda Item Nine for us?
Direct Bureau of Transportation to construct and maintain sidewalks while addressing pavement maintenance deficiencies throughout Portland, improving safety and accessibility for all residents through the Sidewalk Improvement and Paving Program.
Thank you. And counselors, we began our work on this agenda item at our last meeting but didn't have time to complete it. We do have four people who are not able to testify. Rebecca, could you please call their names and see if any of them are here today?
First, we have Marita Inglesby. Marita is joining us online.
Thank you. Marita, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can introduce yourself and begin testimony.
She's promoting to testify.
Do we have anybody in the room while we wait?
Lanell McCauley. Luisa Berecki. Luisa is here.
Great. Luisa, go ahead and come up to the front table to join us. Welcome. Thank you for being here. You can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. And I am not Marissa Inglesby. I'm Mary Ann Fitzgerald, also from District Four. My parent was out this morning. I don't know how widespread it is around town, but I was not able to sign up for this agenda item.
I'm sorry. Are you on the list?
No. So Marita Inglesby is on the list. I'm not. I would like to speak, but I couldn't sign up.
Leslie Hammond. And we're still trying to promote Marita. One second. Marita, if you can hear us, you can unmute. Marita, you can go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can. You're clear to go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I just have a couple slides I would like to share. Thank you very much for allowing me this time. Are you able to see the slides?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so it's time to sip and swim. Here's my testimony. This is a photo of Southwest Shattuck Road, just north of the new Raleigh Crest development, formerly Alpen Rose, showing the lack of even shoulders. There are just, there's just no place to walk on Shattuck Road. Residents cannot safely walk or bike. This is Vermont Street, just east of the new development, another street that does not allow walking or safe walking or biking and needs improvement. There are going to be more than 2,000 trips daily on Southwest Shattuck Road with the new development coming in. And these improvements are already in the Southwest in Motion or Swim Plan. They've been very nicely defined and are just looking for funding. So I am in support of this project. I would like to support this sidewalk improvement and paving program and the swim improvements. Thank you very much.
Marita, thank you for being here with us and for testifying today. We appreciate that. Rebecca, did.
Thank you. That concludes testimony.
Okay. And it sounds like we have somebody who showed up who was not signed up to testify. Unfortunately, we were not taking additional signups for today since this was a carryover item. But if you do have testimony you'd like to submit in writing or share with the clerk, we'll make sure that we get that to everybody. We do want to make sure that we hear your concerns. That moves us into council discussion on this agenda item, and I see Counselor Avalos in the queue, but she has stepped away. Counselors, we are moving into discussion. We heard the introduction of this agenda item at our last meeting, so we don't have an additional committee staff summary or overview. Counselor Clark, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair President. I have an amendment to offer. I think everybody has it. An amendment that actually addresses an issue for District Four sidewalks. And that amendment would to, be to add the words, "and alternative pathways" under the "be it further resolved that the program objectives shall include constructing and maintaining sidewalks and alternative pathways." I'm offering that because the situation in District Four is that it's possible that we can't build out actual concrete sidewalks with curbs and so forth, that we need an alternative approach in District Four. Lots of times, real sidewalks require stormwater situations, improvements, signalization, and we're just not going to get there in District Four because of the geography and past problems. So having an alternative pathway would allow us to actually do more in District Four. So I offer that amendment. I'm looking for a motion.
Counselors, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it as one of the carriers.
Okay. I believe Counselor Green jumped in slightly before you, Counselor Smith. Counselors, I'm going to run through the hands that are up to see if there's discussion on this amendment. Counselor Avalos, are you in the queue on this amendment? Counselor Green, are you in the queue on this amendment? Go ahead, Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just say briefly, you know, there are limited dollars that we are playing with in this city right now, and the urgency for improvements for active transportation in District Four has never been higher. So having a nimble approach to sort of broadening the definition of, of sort of sidewalks in this regard, there are some places where you can do concrete sidewalks. There are some places where you're going to need like a protected path, and I think that will help us meet the need of our residents who desperately need them in Southwest.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes, yes.
Go right ahead.
Madam President, for those folks who were not here the previous two city council meetings, I do want to make clear that this is to direct the Bureau of Transportation to construct and maintain sidewalks in District One and District Four as a priority, which would improve safety and accessibility for all residents through the Sidewalk Improvement and Paving Program. I just wanted to give them what this was since we didn't have a introduction of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knoll, are you in the queue on this amendment? Go right ahead.
Madam President, there's just a question on this. Was the intention behind this amendment to, for alternative pedestrian pathways specifically? Would it be possible to clarify that, or is there a weak, is there a negative associated with that that I wouldn't know about perhaps?
It says maintaining, constructing and maintaining sidewalks right there. It's referencing sidewalks.
Sure, but in terms of the "and alternative pathways," I'm just curious if that was the trying to clarify intent here.
The, the intent is that a sidewalk can be a pathway. It doesn't have to be a concrete sidewalk with curbs and gutters. It can be an alternative. So construction.
Thank you.
Counselor Zimmerman, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yeah, thanks. I think this amendment is important for Southwest in particular, and I think we have some examples of why we've got to be this prescript, given some nature of, of the way business is done in the city of Portland. So yesterday, I had a great tour in Southwest, and I know that there's a number of Portlanders who think Southwest, when we say that, we mean just the very ritzy West Hills, but we're talking about some of the areas that still kids walk in the mud along busy roads in, and they fight blackberries on one side of themselves and semi-trucks on the other side. And we have a Bureau of Transportation who will say that road is not ready for a sidewalk because of a host of things that Counselor Clark and others have brought up because of the difficulties in Southwest Hills. But in the world of ADA, anything is better than mud. Anything is better than fighting the blackberries. And so I think that this is an important amendment to this because I've been told now by PBOT that we're just trying to change curb ramps so that we have straight-on approaches. And then in yesterday's Oregonian, we watched another Taj Mahal curb get put in at 11th and Siskiyou, your district counselor, where they already had straight-on approaches. And so I am tired of being gaslit by this idea of certain things that are or are not available, are or are not functionable. Anything is better than mud. Sidewalks are better than gravel paths. Protected sidewalks are better than the old sidewalks of the 80s. And I think having a gradual approach makes this SIP project the kind of thing we really have to deliver in Southwest and in District One in East Portland. So I really hope folks will, will approve this amendment because I think it gives us as counselors a hold-the-feet-to-the-fire-for-good-and-bad decision-making as we go forward with this program if it gets the support. So thanks, I'll support the amendment.
Counselor Novick, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Counselor Zimmerman, you've just said in succession that anything is better than mud and anything is better than fighting through blackberries. Those two statements are inconsistent, sir. You need to tell us which is worse, mud or blackberries?
Counselor Zimmerman?
Wearing shorts or if you're wearing jeans?
Thank you.
You back in the queue on this amendment?
I'm back in the queue, but I'm.
Not on this amendment.
Yeah.
Counselor Ryan, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Oh, no.
Okay. See, no other discussion on the proposed amendment, which would add to the "be it further resolved that the program objectives shall include" the words "and alternative pathways" after sidewalks in subsection one. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Knoll.
Yeah, thank you for the clarity to the sponsor for this, and given that clarification, I vote aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Hurdle Guinea.
Aye.
Twelve ayes. The Clark Amendment carries.
Thank you. We are going to return to Counselor Avalos in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I have, hold on, let me get my stuff together. I have two amendments that I am going to be proposing, but I'll do them one by one. And so, and I'll explain each of them after I move them. So with the first one, I move to amend the resolution as shown in Avalos Amendment One posted to the agenda, which is about, I'm going to read it to you in a second, adding the existing anti-displacement framework specifically developed for PBOT called Building Belonging in the sixth resolved statement. So I move that. Do I have a second?
Counselors, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So with that, I'll tell you a little more. So I've added this language to include an anti-displacement framework, the Building Belonging Guide alongside the Equity Matrix and existing transportation plans. This tool was developed two years ago in coordination with BPS, and it's actually intended to be a citywide framework that I will be bringing to the Home Assistance and Housing Committee this summer to explore its citywide application. Including this tool ensures that we, that as we prioritize projects, we're not just looking at where sidewalks are missing, but also asking what will this investment do to preserve community stability and belonging? So that is the rationale, and happy to answer questions on my amendment. Thanks.
Counselor Smith, are you in the queue on this amendment? Counselors, is there any discussion on this amendment? Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I don't have any issue with adding that clause. I think, you know, it supports the other references to the city's planning processes we already have in place, and I strongly support anti-displacement, so I plan to support this amendment.
I put myself in the queue with a question. Counselor, I'm just wondering about the timeline of that report. I know that some of our reports are evergreen, some have end dates on them. Is this a report that is still active, and what is its end date? I'm trying to understand how the data in the report is being used elsewhere. I'm trying to understand how the data in the report is being used elsewhere and how that might relate to the timeline for SIP.
Trying to understand your question. I don't.
Is this a report that was created with data for a specific period of time? Or is this a report that was created as guidance for use without a timeline attached to it?
Well, it's not a report, it's a toolkit. So it's like a framework. So I don't know, and it was already completed. So the goal in what I'm asking by adding this to the resolution is to just ensure that that is factored in along with the Equity Matrix and all the other things that are listed in that clause because it's work that P-Bot specifically did about anti-displacement. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but maybe I'm not understanding your question.
I guess I was looking for a little bit more information about how this was supposed to be utilized and how that relates to the project at hand. I had tried to find the report previously and wasn't able to find it. That's probably my own lack of ability with searching.
It's a theoretical framework, just like the Equity Matrix, so it's also meant to be evergreen.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smith, did you?
Yes, I do have something on this. It sounds like it would be something that I would be very supportive of because I haven't had a chance to look at it. And being the maker of the resolution, I do trust my co-sponsor and his ability to say what is good or not. I have not seen it, so I don't know what parameters I am, I would be, you know, committing myself to. And had I had it earlier, I would, I would understand what it is and how it would impact this particular bill. But, that being said, we have made it very clear in our conversations to P-Bot and to the administration that for sure, District One is marginalized and minimized in a way that other places are not in terms of sidewalks. And I believe that anything that we can do that we already have, we don't, I don't want to be held to this tool if I don't know exactly what it is. So I would not be voting for it because I don't know what it is.
I do have a direct response, if you'll allow it.
Let's go to the direct response, and Counselor Zimmerman, we will go to you after that direct response.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I just note that when we worked together on the resolution, my chief of staff, who has a lot of experience in transportation planning, made sure we kind of listed some other policy frameworks. This would be consistent with that, in my view, and I don't think it takes away anything that's of the broader kind of directive of what we're trying to achieve here. So that's just my two cents on that.
Thank you. Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I, those are great comments, and I am a little bit unsure because I think, you know, Counselor Green's put a lot of work into this, but this is coming from, this is amendment that sounds nice by itself. But I just, given what's been submitted in the record, the next amendment is about to cut out the targeted areas. And so this doesn't feel like it's coming from a position of the spirit of what SIP is about. And frankly, the statement P-Bot shall utilize existing plans, I'm going to hold this up. This red right here and this red right here, that inequity is what existing P-Bot plans has resulted in. I'm uninterested in existing P-Bot plans. This plan says that our equitable sidewalk distribution, that Fifth and Hawthorne gets a new curb every couple of years, that Fourth Avenue gets redone, and yet continually East Portland, continually Southwest Hills are left out of the plans. I don't know what Equity Matrix this, this plan is solving, and I don't know why we consider it the plan to solve all questions, but being brought in the spirit of the very next amendment to be brought is to cut out those two areas that I just showed on the map in red feels disingenuous. And I think that Counselor Smith and Counselor Green's work to identify District One and Four and bring us along in that is in response to the failure of P-Bot's existing plans. And I don't think that this amendment will be healthy for this document.
Counselor Ryan, is your comment to this amendment?
Yeah. Counselor Avalos, this is the first I heard about this amendment, and it is a lot to take on as a floor amendment. And so did you take this as toolkit? Where is this toolkit? Is it from, is it from PSF?
No. So first of all, I did include the amendment weeks ago, so it's been on the website, so it wasn't, it's not a floor amendment.
I had to leave the last meeting, so.
Okay, it's on the website. But no, this is not PSF-related. I just emailed it out to everybody. It is a 120-page document put together by P-Bot staff over several years to create a framework that could be applied for P-Bot specifically, but it draws on the work of the anti-displacement work that the city is doing as a whole. And so to me, it is an opportunity to tie back to the work P-Bot has already done. So if we're listing Equity Matrix and all the other things listed, it made sense to me to include the very thing that they created for this purpose.
Has Director Williams, have you spoke to this in front of us, this amendment? I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Good morning, Millicent Williams, Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. We have not spoken about this plan in particular before this body or before the committee, but it is work that the Bureau did engage in several years ago. And while it is not, it does not fall in the same category as a SWIM or Northwestern Motion or some of the other planning documents or the Equity Matrix in that it was not a full adoption of the plan, it is work that the team did work on, and it can help to inform the strategy for how we prioritize. I will note that my understanding of what has been introduced from Counselors Smith and Green suggests that we get people's feet out of the mud. That is not anti-displacement. That is, I mean, that is not displacement. That is recognizing a significant deficiency in infrastructure. And so to put sidewalks where there are none is not intended to be a displacement exercise. It may be an unintended consequence of that, but the hope is that we would not find ourselves putting people in positions of having to make decisions about where they will live, where they will do business, but it really is intended to, on a block-by-block basis, ensure that we're providing sidewalks, alternative pathways, ability for pedestrians and people who are on mobility devices to move around safely, as well as streets that do not have, that are not riddled with potholes or rudded because there has not been attention given to those efforts, those facilities.
Counselor, do you have follow-up?
I'm trying to figure out if this is going to solve any problems, if this is additive.
It supports the overall effort. It doesn't hurt anything for us to make sure that we're considering the things that are part of this report.
I thought that's what you were saying, but I just wanted to get that succinct response. Thank you.
And Director, there may be other questions if you want to stick close.
Sure.
Counselor Smith, are you in the queue for comments to this amendment?
Yes, and I'd like to have the clerk put up two pictures that my staff gave. This will put a finer point on why SIP is necessary in District One and in District Four.
Counselor, is that for this amendment or is that related to the next amendment, which removes those from SIP, those districts?
Well, this is going to, it piggybacks on what Counselor Zimmerman talked about, why this particular amendment may not be needed because if we look at the data that we, that we saw in the mayor's budget, it shows in the, it shows in the plan for P-Bot, it will show you the amount of dollars that have been spent in the East compared to other parts of the city. And if you look at P-Bot's 24, 25 numbers, it will show you that there is only $650,000 that have been spent in the East. If you look at the environmental services point, there has been $0 spent compared to the other sides of town, and they list it. And so for me, that has been in place, and then they did a five-year plan. Environmental Services, there, over the next five years, they have the East getting $0. It's not because the Bureau didn't prioritize it. They did. They asked and they requested it, but the mayor and the previous council zeroed it out. So there is an institutional marginalization of District One specifically that if we're talking about plans that we worked on with the community, they were not adopted, it's 120 pages, I don't have time to read those 120 pages, but I know today, if SIP passes, that I will be making sure that we have pathways, active transportation, making sure that those places that we did not have sidewalks or safety areas, like in our high crash corridors, 122nd Division, Stark, and all those places, I am going to be on the case to make sure that these plans are put into place. So, that being said, I will not be supporting this amendment.
Counselor Canall, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes, I am. I just want to remind everyone that when we had our conversation about amendments that were proposed to the resolution on Zenith, we had a Counselor, Counselor Zimmerman, ask that his motives not be impugned repeatedly to conversations that we had on amendments to the amendment request to change that. And so I want to say that we should apply that standard across the board here and take each of these two amendments separately. I think there's, we're going to have a separate argument on the Second Amendment that's being proposed in a moment here, and I think that's going to be spirited, and I'm looking forward to it. But on the first, I think it's valid to say if we have a complaint on it or a support for it and not to question whether or not it's trying to sneak something in. I'm getting a little bit, it's frustrating to see my colleagues accused of trying to sneak things in when in reality, there is often an attempt to look at the details and look at each detail separately. I will say that I agree that there has been a significant lack of equity within the city in terms of where things have been. Holding one particular report that was put out in April 2024 responsible for how sidewalks, which are years to build and decide where they're going to be built and maintained, doesn't make any sense to me. So I think it's fair to say that P-Bot historically has not been successful at creating equitable distribution of sidewalks in the city. I don't think it's fair to say that that makes, that that should be held to this particular report and toolkit. For that reason, I will be voting in support of it in particular because it is my district, District Two, where often the displacement has taken place from. Thank you.
Counselor Mario, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yeah, I think this is just for the First Amendment, and I would like to echo everything that Counselor Canall just said, that we have to be able, first of all, Counselor Avalos did bring both of these amendments with a lot of time. I believe she emailed them to all of us a few weeks ago. They were also publicly posted on the website. We can pull them up right now. I was able to Google the title of the report. I was able to pull up the report and find what it was, so I don't think that this was obfuscated from us in any way. I think we just are all balancing a lot of different things to track. But I think that as far as this goes, I don't really see the harm in adding it. It's about ensuring that, yes, we're going to add sidewalks, and I don't think that's going to increase displacement, but as you talked about, there sometimes are unintended consequences in policymaking. And so this is just saying, this is a lens that we want to apply to any future construction that we do. And because of that, this seems like, this amendment seems like a no-brainer to me to support, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Koyamalene?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm feeling like there might be some stuff that I'm not picking up on that is not being said. I'm not totally understanding what it is. I am not sure if these two amendments are connected, unconnected, why people are seeing that. I move to lay this amendment on the table and do the other one first and come back to this one.
Counselors? Counselors, there's a motion on the table to lay this amendment and open Avalos Amendment Two first, given what seems to be some overlap in concerns between the two of them. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Rebecca, I believe we would need a roll call on this motion. Canall.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
No.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
And Hurdle Guinea?
Aye, and thank you, Counselor, for moving us along here. I believe we now have Amendment One tabled. We will come back to it. Amendment Two is, we'll take up Amendment Two. Counselor Avalos, would you like to introduce your amendment, and we can look for a second to that amendment?
Yes, for sure. All right, so my second amendment, I've proposed removing references to specific council districts in the resolution, not to diminish the very real and disproportionate need in Districts One and Four, but to ensure that the language centers equity as a citywide principle. Our commitment should be to prioritize based on demonstrated need and impact using tools like Building Belonging and Equity Matrix as, or existing plans. And this helps reinforce the idea that our investments follow data and values, not district lines, because every neighborhood deserves safe and accessible infrastructure. I'm happy to answer questions on that.
Counselors, before we move into discussion, is there a second on this amendment?
Second.
That was from Counselor Canall. Counselor Smith, are you in the queue on this amendment?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. When I ran for city council, it was a personal commitment to ensure that city government provides equal and equitable opportunities for all Portland residents, especially those of us who have been historically underserved or overlooked by the city, especially those of us living in District One. The city annexed the areas of District One in the late 1980s and early 1990s, and it seemed like we are still fighting to be seen as a part of Portland. I launched the SIP program, the Sidewalk Improvement and Paving Program, with Counselor Green and Counselor Clark and Counselor Zimmerman as a practical way to address some of those inequalities, literally at the ground level. A P-Bot presentation before the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee brought those inequalities into sharp focus for me. Page 10 of that presentation shows a map, and a map that I passed around that you all can see, of the city with street color-coded to illustrate sidewalk completeness. Streets with sidewalks on both sides are gray, streets with sidewalks on one side are orange, and streets missing sidewalks entirely are red. Districts One and Four have the most red and orange, but for different reasons. District Four has environmental challenges. It's difficult and expensive to build good sidewalks on steep hills, but District One has a different challenge. It's not the geography or engineering challenges, but that District One has been chronically overlooked due to under-representation in City Hall, which the voters sought to correct with this new form of city government. The Cully neighborhood needs better streets and sidewalks, so does the area around Flavelle south of Woodstock. But if you look at the map, the streets and the sidewalks of District One, they are obviously been neglected compared to similar neighborhoods nearby and compared to most of inner Portland. Why shouldn't the Powerhurst Gilbert neighborhood have good streets and sidewalks like Laurelhurst? Don't kids walking, riding, or rolling to David Douglas High School deserve the same streets and the sidewalks as kids attending Leighton High School? Or even Grant High School, especially when 40% of Portland's youth live in District One? And I want to make that fact really clear. Think about that. 40% of the city's kids live in District One. We have to protect those kids. What are solutions for people facing mobility challenges? What do we tell folks with walkers or wheelchairs? Don't they deserve the same opportunities and abilities to wander their neighborhoods and parks as the rest of us? Or do we simply offer them the solution of move closer to downtown? You know where the good streets are, right? And I'm sorry, displacement is not an issue. We are the furthest east We are the furthest east in the city. We have no place else to go. We are where we are. The average salary for a family in District One is $60,000 compared to the other three parts in the three districts in the city, which are in the neighborhood of $91,000 to $93,000. So in terms of displacement, we are where we are, and that's where we're going to stay. And so for my money, and for my effort, and for my colleagues, I just urge you to support this because we need to call attention to the marginalization of District One and other places as it results to public works and infrastructure. And that's what we're doing. And to say that all sidewalks or work on sidewalks are not going to be done in District Two and Three, that's not saying that. It's saying we're going to put additional resources on top of the resources that we're spending around the city to make sure that we level the playing field for folks who are living, working, and playing in District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canal, are you in the queue on Avalos Amendment Two?
Yes, Madam President.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions first for primarily Director Williams, but possibly also the attorney. So, you know, in the impact statement, the third line, it says particularly areas of Districts One and Four, particularly. Whereas in the sixth and ninth whereas clauses, which this amendment proposes adjusting, it says prioritizing investments in Districts One and Four in one, and then in the other it says in key locations throughout Districts One and Four. My question is, would this be interpreted as being exclusive to Districts One and Four the way it is currently written for this particular program? Because it's been, I think, discussed as if it might be, and I want to understand that better.
My understanding, and I'm sorry, Lindley, do you want to go first? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Canal. My understanding is that we will be prioritizing Districts One and Four. This is not excluding the opportunity to support other parts of the city. But we do need to make sure that we are conforming to the expectations of the resolution and the guidance, which suggests that we, or informs that we look at Districts One and Four as the priority. And then as the needs are identified, and we have some of those already identified, and opportunities present themselves for us to be able to strategically make investments to enhance infrastructure in other parts of town, I believe that the spirit of the resolution, it would be that we would attend to those things as well. So that's my understanding of what we would be doing. I hope that that does conform with this council's expectations around what was introduced as the resolution.
Lindley, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I think there are, you know, your job is to give policy direction, and when you're not using mandatory terms, it gives the executive side the ability to interpret that. As, as the director has said, they want to interpret it in a way that is consistent with your objectives and your desires. So the more you're explaining that, the more they're able to do that. But I don't think the language here says only District One and Four, so.
And for example, if we were doing corridor work on a street or corridor that extends from District One into District Two, or from District One into, I mean, District Four into District Three, or whatever the combination of things is, would we cut it at the line? No, of course not. We would continue that work. And so I think we have some opportunities to, as we progress the work as proposed, to continue to have conversations, to make sure that everyone is really clear about how we are moving the work forward. My understanding is that the resolution provides us the opportunity to develop a four-year plan. That helps to inform the way in which we will move the process through. Some of those projects, we anticipate that will end up on a list, to the extent that there is a list, are things that we'll want to have the opportunity to discuss with this council, to make sure that, again, we're following the expectations as outlined by the resolution and the guidance that we have been given, but that we're also applying the appropriate lens to the delivery of the overall project program.
Thank you. And then my other question, before I get into my comment, is about the portion of this that is not about sidewalks, because this is Sidewalk Improvement and Paving Program, and it also says multiple times while addressing pavement maintenance deficiencies. And if I could have a little information speaking to that, we haven't seen the map on anything other than sidewalks yet. I know that's in the documents that Counselor Smith sent around. Can we get those shared on the screen? Or the map about the third topic that's addressed here, which is safety, which is the map that was briefly shown on screen during Counselor Smith's comments a few minutes ago? And I'd love to see it on that screen as well as on the Zoom screen, if possible.
I believe that screen was referring to the screen that folks who are here with us in chambers and online can see.
Not talking about this map. I'm talking about the map with the names on it for the safety, or I'm talking about the map that showed, that one. Thank you. I think what I'm struggling with, with this document as a whole, is about the geography of it. And the reason is because I'm being asked to accept that seven is greater than 19. That is what I'm being asked to do right now as a representative of District Two. Because if you look at the names on this list, there are 19 names in District Two, and there are seven names in District Four. I want to make sure that there are zero in any district. And I want to be very clear about that. Any of those seven folks who lost their lives in District Four is a tragedy. But I also don't understand why we cannot prioritize from the pavement perspective the district that clearly has the second highest number of fatalities, which is District Two. And obviously, the context to all this is that District One has more than any other district, and nearly as many as everyone else combined. I do want to observe that. And I have never had an issue with prioritization for District One. But from a safety perspective, I do think it is vital to point out that 19 is, in fact, greater than seven. And then when we get to the pavement side, I would also point out that there are roads all over not only Cully, but Cathedral Park that are unpaved at the same level of density as almost any other neighborhood. And I think saying the same thing applies to the folks in Cathedral Park, saying move closer to downtown, go into Irvington, go into the Lloyd District, go into Sullivan's Gulch, go into any of those neighborhoods in the inner Northeast, and leave North Portland, or telling Cully folks the same thing is equally a bad argument. I completely agree with that. So for me, I would love to vote for this resolution. I want to support this. I am a hater of potholes, and on the pavement side in particular, I think it is one of the biggest things we can do to show that we are a functional city, is have our pavement, including sidewalks and alternative pathways, be functional. But I am struggling with the, with the idea that safety requires accepting a numerical untruth. The last thing I'll mention before seeing the floor here is that when we, this is, I believe, the first policy document coming out of Transportation and Infrastructure. And I think it's notable that the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee has no District Two counselors on it. And so as a result, you know, one of the things that we've, the sin we've committed over the years as a city has often been to not have any voices from East Portland in the room. And I think that's, that's been a clear problem. And I think when there's people that aren't in the room, their voices are often not reflected in policy. District Two is not in the room on Transportation and Infrastructure, and I think that's been reflected in a couple of the decisions here as it relates to the comparison. So I will be supporting the amendment with the knowledge that, you know, District One in particular does need that prioritization, but noting every one of those names is a tragedy, in particular for my district, the 19 names from District Two.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, two notes. First of all, you just received a new document from Counselor Avalos. The original one that was sent was not actually the accurate document for Avalos Amendment One. So if you have a few seconds in between listening to your colleagues, you may want to pull that up. Second thing is a note that we are scheduled with this resolution through 11:25. That is 15 more minutes. We have a very tight agenda. I am hoping we can get this in, so if folks can be judicious with your words, that would be great. Counselor Green, are you speaking to the amendment?
I am. Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to support the amendments, because I think if you strike the terms in District One and District Four, it renders the point of this resolution largely moot. And we just sort of fall back on the broader transportation planning framework that we already have. And I got to tell you, I did a walk in the West Portland Town Center yesterday, and I walked along the side of a road on Taylor's Ferry that children, particularly children who are lower income, children who are from the immigrant community, use to access the amenities that they need to get. And that's, you know, it's been 30-some-odd years since the need was identified for a lot of these sidewalks and pathways. And so I asked the question of how long should Southwest Portland wait for sidewalks? Is it 50 years? Is it 100 years? Is it longer? I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question, but I know if we don't put in very clear language that says we need to prioritize these neighborhoods now because there has been a lack of investment in the history of those neighborhoods existing in this part of the city of Portland, we may likely never get there. And those children will become adults if they survive. It's also notable that if you ride the Number 12 bus down Barbara Boulevard, at any hour of the day, you're going to see working-class people. These are people who are not wealthy. These are people who struggle to make ends meet. They take transportation by necessity, and their ability to reach the stops along Barbara Boulevard depends upon their ability to safely get to those stops. And so I think that there's a couple issues at play here. One is sort of a safety equity lens. The other piece is a climate lens. You know, if we want to lower congestion and lower the overall cost of our P-Bot budget over time from a sort of generational life, asset lifecycle cost lens, then we're going to have to make it easier for everyone in the city, particularly the parts of the city that cannot ditch their cars, because it's not safe and there's no accessibility. We're going to have to make that as easy as possible. So if we want to reduce congestion in District Two, where you have a high rate of traffic fatalities, you're going to have to reduce, you're going to provide ridership opportunities and non-car alternatives in District Four. Counselor Canal, to your point on paving and potholes and its nexus with traffic-related fatalities or injuries, it seems to me that when you pave a street and you fill potholes, that speeds up the rate of traffic flow. So I'm not sure that that is a way to think about safety. I think if you want to think about safety, it's modal filters, it's diverters, it's Vision Zero, taking vision seriously, and that is in our budget. I prepare to support those programs overall. What I'm not prepared to support is an effort to strike District Four or District One from this resolution. I think it's, I think we were elected to fight for our districts, and I'm doing that right now. And I'm not going to go back to my district and talk to the immigrant community in Southwest Portland and tell them I did not fight for them. So I'm not going to vote for this amendment.
Counselor Avalos, I apologize. I thought that was a legacy hand, but it sounds like you are in the queue to speak to the amendment.
Yeah, do you want me to go now, then?
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for the discussion. I obviously know that I'm, you know, introducing something that people feel very strongly about. And I think, first of all, I'll just say, yes, East Portland has the largest sidewalk gaps in the entire city. No one knows that better than the people who live there, including me. And my amendment is about making sure that sidewalk investments are strategic, equitable, and sustained, not just one-time political wins. I removed district-specific language from the resolution because I believe that equity needs to be citywide. And if the data shows that District One needs more investment, then that's where it will go. But I don't think I should have to carve that into every policy to prove that District One deserves things. If we truly believe in this Equity Matrix and all the other tools that we're using to identify where need is, then I think we need to actually follow it and act on the data that already tells us where the gaps are, and making sure that we're not missing districts entirely that are also shown in the data to have gaps. If we are directing P-Bot to allocate half a billion dollars, and I, when we get to the main resolution, I have a lot of questions about that, too, make sure that we are, you know, holding the right expectation for our community on what we're promising them. But I don't see how, you know, to me, this, doing this is about enhancing our ability to ensure equity is ensured in this project, especially if you're, the point of the project or the resolution is to ask P-Bot to invest more dollars. I do not think it's right to have district lines around who deserves the most streets or the most equity as it relates to these projects. So obviously, I am a District One counselor. I know very, I feel very strongly about us getting what we deserve. And I think that if we are setting a precedent in general that we're going to start having district fights, that's not a fight I'm willing to have. I don't think that I need to sit here and beg for my district to receive resources that are clearly needed by the data. And so I'm trying to prevent us from making this precedent where we're going to turn this into some kind of turf war instead of, you know, and what I also always say is that as a district counselor, it's my job to bring my neighborhood perspective to the table, but to implement citywide policy. And so it is my job to bring District One's voice into the table and ensure that as we are making decisions about our dollars, that they are being distributed equitably. And if they are, then my district is going to get what we deserve. So that is the framework that I'm introducing. That's why I'm requesting that we do this, because I don't think this is the right precedent to set as we continue on and make decisions about where investments go. Thanks.
Counselors, a reminder that we have nine minutes left. I am next in the queue. Director Williams, if we were to pass the underlying ordinance without this amendment, would you still be able to make the investments in sidewalk infrastructure in Cully, where we know that they are one of the worst neighborhoods in the city for sidewalk infrastructure that that neighborhood needs?
Yes. I believe that that is the spirit of what this resolution intends, and that is what we would be able to do. My hope is that we would be able to use all of our tools, many of which have been engaged even as we've made investments from our CIP perspective. The reason why we haven't had significant investment in basic infrastructure across the city and more specifically in Districts One and Four is because of historic underinvestment. And I'm not necessarily pointing fingers at anyone or blaming anyone for that, but Counselor Smith did, in her introduction or her overview, provide that these are areas where annexing has happened. When the annexing occurred, there was not a maintenance agreement in place. We did not have the opportunity to then go and maintain the street that was not a part of the maintenance agreement. So we would be able to do that. Again, we want to make sure that we're operating within the spirit of this resolution, and while we would be able to prioritize Districts One and Four, as we have on several other things. I mean, we have hundreds of millions of dollars planned for certain parts of town, and it's not based on who lives there or what we believe the wealth of that area to be, but rather the need. And we can speak to all those projects on ad nauseam, but yes, we would be able to do that.
And I'm going to cut you not speaking about those projects because we're tight on time, but what I'm hearing is that as a representative of District Two, I could support the underlying without Avalos Amendment Two and still be assured that while we are prioritizing districts where many investments are needed, those neighborhoods within my district where investments are also needed would still be able to receive the investments that they're waiting for as well. Yes, thank you.
Madam President. A point of order. Information. Cully is in District One.
No, Cully is in District Two.
Yes, ma'am. I have the airport. Yes, ma'am. My district goes all the way down to 33rd and around and over to Marine Drive. That is considered Cully.
I.
That is considered Cully. Look.
Okay.
Know where my, know where your district is.
We'll talk about neighborhood maps. I know where the lines are. Counselor, I want us to get to a vote on your resolution.
Madam President, you made a specific point. Will we be able to do Cully? Cully is in District One.
Counselor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it is.
Counselor.
Yes, it is.
I would like us to be able to get to a vote, and we have six minutes left. Counselor Zimmerman?
I think this item has been pushed enough. I think we should blow the timeline and have this debate right here, right now, for the next, as long as it takes then. My comments. So while we've been having this debate, sometimes we're being interrupted in this chamber by the beeping construction horns outside. That project is what the Portland Equity Lens has led to, is that Fourth Avenue, the most serviced street in our community, is getting another level of service. I am not interested in preserving the status quo. By putting this amendment forward, we are saying that the status quo is working, and this map tells me that the status quo for sidewalks has not worked. This is a mean-spirited amendment. It is designed to protect the status quo and to say that the areas who are red in this do not need a focus. And in crisis, and in problems, and in anything you want to improve, you put yourself at the point of friction. And the point of friction is where the red on that map is at. That is why we have to direct funds directly to the areas that have a problem. So I'm not interested in protecting this status quo. The counselor who introduced this said she wants to... The counselor who introduced this said she wants it produced by the data, and I'm just curious what part of this data is invalid. This is very clear data. So this amendment should not move forward. I started on this dais looking over to my colleagues in District 1, recognizing that District 4 has historically had a lot of privilege in this city. But District 4 is more than just downtown. It is more than the Northwest Hills. It is also the deep southwest, where we still have very marginalized communities who don't always get the microphone in this chamber. We continue to have an influx of folks who moved to Oregon and to Portland, and this is their first stop, is in the Southwest Hills. We have a diverse community there. The income levels there are different than the way the rest of our district gets categorized. The status quo has not worked for that portion of District 4, and we want to support District 1 as well. I worked in that district. I've so familiar with District 1 for a long time. My family's from East Portland. I don't need a lecture on what District 1 needs. I'm well aware, which is why I am against this amendment and fully in support of this entire resolution.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Murio.
Thank you, Council President. So first of all, I'm going to vote no on this amendment, but I also want to say that Counselor Zimmerman, multiple times on this dais, you have already been told to stop taking potshots at people. And Counselor Avalos, like, we can't be judging each other's intentions. We just have to be going through this. You and I have gone through this, and we have worked it out together, and we're homies now. So let's just keep it chill for everybody and not imbue each other's actions with intentions that we don't actually know about. Now I'm going to move into my actual comments, but I'm just kind of tired of that happening. As far as the, I think we're in a really interesting role as far as districts and holding the entire city together as something that we have to think about and balance as we navigate this new district system. And to me, equity doesn't mean that everybody gets the same thing. Equity actually means that we address where past harms have happened and where people don't have the same things that other people have. And it is very clear to me from the data that Districts 1 and 4 have the least sidewalks. And it pains me to say that because there is a chunk of District 3 that desperately needs sidewalks. There's a big red in the area of Flavel Street, and I know that's something my constituents are really concerned about. The reason I'm going to not support this amendment to strike Districts 1 and 4 from it is because this resolution is not prohibitive. It's not going to prevent District 3 from having some of those things looked at. It's just going to suggest that we look at the areas that don't have it while also ensuring that we're going to look at some of those spaces that do. I also want to say that I think that we're conflating a few things as far as safety versus infrastructure. So while District 2, for example, may have a lot of sidewalks but doesn't, but has also high level of traffic deaths, that's also because a lot of the infrastructure that needs to be built, which is not addressed in this, this is focused on sidewalks specifically, are traffic calming measures, like actual barriers that slow traffic down, protected bike lanes, et cetera. And that's something that absolutely should be addressed and, to me, is separate from this resolution because this is very specific to sidewalks. So because of that, and because I think equity means that we actually address where historically people aren't having these things, which are in the deep southwest areas where immigrant families live, where our, which is in District 1, where a lot of our BIPOC community live and where people have been annexed and not given the resources to maintain those sidewalks, I'm not going to support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith, are you back in the queue?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't believe that this is a turf war. I think we're really addressing historic wrongs. We're addressing disparity, lack of investment, which, as my colleague to my left here mentioned, has been going on for well over 30 years for District 4. And he also provided the climate lens, which I was going to address, because you can't walk safely in certain parts of District 4. You can't bike safely. There's no bus. So what do you do? You drive, and that's a climate issue. So with that comment, I am going to call the question on this amendment.
Counselors, we've had the question called on this amendment. I believe that leads us right to a vote on whether we should move to a vote on the amendment. We need a second. Need a second. Okay, we have a second. Go ahead and call the roll, Rebecca. Canal.
On the motion, no.
Brian.
Aye.
Aye.
Koyamaline.
Aye.
Murio.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
In general, I do not appreciate when there's one or two more people on the list to speak that we call the question. I do not think that tool is necessary if there's only one more person that is left to speak, and so I'm voting no.
Dunphy.
Ditto, no.
Smith.
Aye.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye.
That moves us directly to a vote on Amendment 2. This is the amendment to strike Districts 1 and 4, where they are listed in the underlying resolution. Rebecca, could you please call the roll? Canal.
Thank you. Everything that's been stated about some of the specific neighborhoods mentioned in districts, in particular District 4, but also District 1, applies equally to the neighborhoods in North Portland. We can just change, copy, paste the names of the streets, and the questions around transportation would matter a great deal there. I'll also point out that potholes don't just affect cars, they also affect people on bicycles. And the top two streets for bicycle deaths are both located in District 2, Interstate and Killingsworth. And for injuries, the most dangerous street is Broadway, which cuts through D2 and D3. So this is not about only cars when we talk about pavement. I obviously support modal filtering and a lot of the other things mentioned there as well. But I do want to point that out. Vehicle crashes are things that kill people, too. I'm not the person who brought in to this debate the map in question. That was, if we're justifying this based on safety, let's look at the data and see what it says. I think that's a responsibility that we all have. I will say that if this was just about sidewalks, I would completely support it the way it is, but it is not just about sidewalks. The resolution speaks specifically to pavement as well. It's just that the maps were being handed out and all the things that have been given out over the course of these three meetings where we've talked about it have been exclusive to the sidewalk side. And then finally, because I think Counselor Avalos has really manifested a great deal of leadership here by taking an item that's about her own district and saying, this is a bad idea to start talking about prioritizing investments by district rather than by neighborhood or by framework. I think if someone here were to bring an argument saying, we're going to fund the Fire Bureau, but only in District 2, that would be problematic. And I think that's a precedent that we should avoid setting. With that, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, targeted plans produce outcomes and impact that's desperately needed for decades. I vote no on the amendment.
Koyamaline.
I really appreciate Counselor Canal bringing up Vision Zero. It's something that gets my attention and I care a lot about. I also was nodding very heavily when Counselor Murio was talking about fair doesn't mean everyone gets the same thing. I do that lesson with my class every year, means you get what you need. And we talk about how I need glasses, does everyone need glasses? No, not necessarily. I will also say I've been learning a lot from you and from community groups, bike pedestrian advocacy groups about Vision Zero. I know that it's important to look at the data and see what exactly is lowering traffic deaths. We know the recently released report by PBOB is that last year in 2024, about half of the traffic deaths were in D1. I think that absolutely needs to be uplifted. I think it's fine to point that out. When you see legislation coming from me about Vision Zero, that will be in there. I think that's important. So I vote no.
Murio.
No.
Novick.
I want to say that if I were in District 1 or District 4, I probably would support Counselor Avalos's amendment and agree that we should not be making decisions based on district boundaries. However, since I represent District 3, which does have missing sidewalks in some places, but nowhere near what District 1 and District 4 have, I kind of feel like if I supported the amendment, I would be denying the higher sidewalk needs of District 1 and District 4. So I think this is a, pretty much a coin flip, but based purely in that emotional reaction, I vote no.
Clark.
I'm glad that Counselor Koyamaline brought up Vision Zero. Actually, it was another counselor earlier, because this resolution really came out of our discussion of safety and Vision Zero. That's where this began, in the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And just for the record, pavement maintenance deficiencies is a euphemism for potholes. So I don't think we're going to be doing a lot of paving necessarily, other than potholes. So with that, I vote no.
Green.
I'll just say that I don't agree with the premise that it sets a bad precedent to name specific areas in the city where we need to do targeted investment. I think targeted investment is a standard best practice in industrial policy. And I will support, and I will vote yes heartily, on any ordinance that says we must build more fire stations in District 1, because District 1 does not have enough fire stations. So bring me that ordinance, I'll co-sponsor it. I vote no.
Zimmerman.
All right, I'm fired up about the amendment, and I will take that opportunity to apologize if my comments were taken as an impugning of motivations. That's how it felt, and it maybe was not appropriate for the dais, but to look at this map, it got, and to be a person who has signaled support for another district's needs, I got serious about it. And so I am a sharp-tongued person. I recognize it's not always welcome, and I appreciate the check, Counselor. But this amendment is not something I will support. I vote no.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Yeah, colleagues, I'm an unapologetic champion for East Portland. If East Portland got 25% of our investment in infrastructure, I would, you know, that would be, we'd be miles ahead. I'm not coming for our fair share, I want extra, and I will not apologize for that. If we were in a street fight, District 1 will win anyway. So I appreciate my colleague, Counselor Avalos, for the amendment, but I vote no.
Smith.
Equity looks different in different places. And we can go down the line from education, health, economic development, affordable housing, safe routes to schools, and I guarantee you that District 1 will check first on every single item. I didn't see any reason to support this in any way. Commissioner Zimmerman, you were okay, because someone alluded to me that I was a beggar. And I want to say this to the, for the record, I am not a beggar, I am a policymaker. I create policies, and I created it first. And if that's the issue why there's all this kerfuffle over what this looks like, then just get over it, be a policymaker. I vote no.
Pertle Guinea.
No.
10 noes and 2 ayes. The Avalos Amendment 2 fails. Thank you. Counselors, we are nine minutes over. We have nowhere else in the agenda that we can cut. We have an amendment on the table and the underlying ordinance. I am looking for a temperature check on whether we can do this with minimal discussion and finish this as quickly as possible, or if we need more time for discussion and need to postpone this to a further meeting. Can I call the question?
Second.
We haven't even discussed the resolution. Are we talking about the amendment next? And I'm strongly against us cutting. I have a lot of questions. This is a big bill. I'm not down to cut our discussion time.
We just had a motion placed on the table, and I'd like a clarification on the motion. Are you calling the question on Amendment 1, or are you calling the question on the underlying resolution?
On the underlying resolution.
I believe your second disagrees with that, so I think you need a new second.
Okay.
We have the amendment on there. I would like to call the question on Amendment 1. I feel like we've discussed it already, and then I think we take up the underlying, Madam President.
Sorry. So we've called the question on Amendment 1 from Counselor Zimmerman.
Second.
I do.
Second.
Okay, and we have a second from Counselor Clark. We are moving into voting on Amendment 1. Rebecca, could you please call the roll?
Do we not need to vote on the motion?
I'm sorry, we're moving into voting on whether to call the question and move into voting on Amendment 1. Thank you, I misspoke, Counselor.
Can I have a point of order, though? Because this keeps happening where people shout out a motion that are not listed, you didn't call on them, they don't have the floor necessarily, and you're accepting the motion. There's people that are in the queue. So what's the process for accepting motions that just get shouted at you?
So as you just made a point of order, there are certain things you can do in a point of order, and my understanding from our attorneys is that calling the question is something you can do as a point of order to skip the line.
Okay, they didn't say a point of order. They just said, I make a motion. So if we're going to go by that, that still does not meet the qualification you said.
Call the question.
That's fine, we can move forward. I'm just saying this keeps happening, and I'd like clarity on how we're going to honor people that are in the queue, if we're going to let people shout out a motion.
Counselor, I think what we have right now is a decision that we need to make about whether we can finish this in the next five minutes or not, because we have a very packed agenda of things that have to happen to keep us on our budget timeline left today. And so I think we are finding out if we can do this quickly or not right now. Rebecca, we have a motion and a second to call the question on Amendment 1. Could you please take the roll? Canal.
I would be voting no on every motion to call the question, and I would like to suggest that in Roberts' rules, there is a motion to limit debate to those already in the queue. That might be a less blunt instrument for the future, so I'll be voting no on this.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyamaline.
Aye.
Murio.
Aye.
Novick.
No.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
No.
Dunphy.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye.
Counselors, we are moving to a vote on Avalos Amendment 1, which adds PBOB's Building Belonging Guide. Again, I will point out that we received two documents. The accurate one is the second document. It is a 30-page document that you all received from Counselor Avalos. Rebecca, could you please call the roll on adding PBOB's Building Belonging Guide to the be it further resolved that PBOB staff shall utilize existing plans resolved clause in the resolution? Canal.
Given the clarifications we heard that Districts 2 and 3 would still receive some investments, if not necessarily at a prioritized level, I think it's appropriate to reference displacement here. Additionally, displacement occurs in Districts 1 and 4. The Asian-American communities have been displaced out of District 4 and go to Gresham and see how many people have come out of not only 2, but 1 over the years as well. So I vote aye.
Ryan.
No.
Koyamaline.
Aye.
Murio.
This is a common sense amendment, I vote aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
No.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
No.
Pertle Guinea.
I was very concerned with the first document we were sent that didn't look like it had any relevancy to the work that we were doing. The second document looks like it could have relevancy. I wish that we had been sent it when the original amendment was posted or that it had been sent, posted alongside that, because I could not find it Googling it. I did try about a week ago, but I will, with the updated Belonging Guide sent to us, vote aye.
Nine ayes, three noes. Avalos Amendment 1 is accepted. Counselors, we are back to the underlying resolution.
Like to call the question on the whole resolution?
Could you state that as a point of order, please?[1726.73]
Oh, point of order, I'd like to motion for us to vote on this and get it done.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from councillor Mario and a second from councillor Clark. Rebecca, could you please call the roll? This is the roll to bypass further discussion, a vote to bypass further discussion and move to a vote on the amended resolution.
Canal.
No.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyamalene.
No.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
No.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
I want to hear what my colleagues who don't support the amendment or the resolution have to say.
No.
Zimmerman.
No.
Avalos.
No.
Dunphy.
No.
Smith.
Madam President, can you call the question?
This is the vote to call the question, and unfortunately, colleagues, if this fails, we are not going to be able to continue discussion today.
And, madam president, point of order. I just, I need you to explain the question.
Right now, the vote we are taking is on whether to call the question, bypass further debate, and move to a vote on the now amended SIP resolution.
And a no vote is, we get to hear folks?
A no vote is to discussion, except we are already 15 minutes over, and there are not things we can bump from this agenda.
Well, this is, this is my point exactly, this would be the fourth time, and...
I'm going to change my vote. How do I do that?
This is the fourth time, and we got to vote on this, no matter how long it takes, we have to, we cannot afford... When we did previous city council meetings, you did not limit other agenda items to a certain amount of time, we went overtime. But now that SIP is going to identify marginalized, minimized communities who have historically not had the investment with city funding, now we get pushed back again. And, no, we have to vote on this today. We cannot push this back another day. It is unacceptable, and it's unprofessional, and it gives us less of a, of an opportunity to express where our values truly are. So, that's an issue for me.
Councillor, I'm not going to take the time to discuss that as I'm trying to rush the agenda, but I hear you, and I'm happy to discuss it with you later, on or off the record.
No, ma'am.
Do you have a vote?
No, ma'am. No.
You're voting no?
I'm voting yes, I want, yes, we can vote.
You're voting yes.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye.
Clark, I would like to change my vote to an aye. We have, we're tied at six nay, six aye. I'm calling the question. Here. The mayor does not weigh in on procedural questions, a six, six is not a majority, therefore the vote fails. Councillors, I did not want to cut this short, I gave us significant extra time. We have Portlanders who are waiting for our decision on settlements, we have fees that have to be approved to pass the budget.
Madam President.
And I am very sorry, but we have to move on.
Point of order?
Point of order.
I would like to move to limit debate to the current queue.
Councillor, we are 20 minutes past time, and you pulled things off of the consent agenda, adding to the time for our agenda today, what do you propose we cut?
I propose we take these three speakers, and I'll remove myself from the queue, and then vote on this.
We have a proposal on the table.
Second.
Okay, can we do this through unanimous consent, Rebecca? I am seeing nods from our attorney, do I have unanimous consent to end debate after councillor Smith?
No.
Okay, Rebecca, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ryan. Sorry, was that an aye, councillor Ryan?
Yeah.
Thank you. Lane, Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
I think this is a big deal and deserves further discussion, is not an emergency. That's why I'm voting no.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
No.
Avalos.
No.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
This is an emergency, councillor Novick, and I'm voting aye.
Pertle Guinea.
Aye. Councillor Avalos, you are up.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions as relates to the financing. Let me pick one that's most urgent. I guess, given the $460 million annual need just to improve existing pavement assets, how are we defining success for this program within these current constraints? And further, I'll combine two of these questions. Given that PBOB is going to need to absorb some of the initial costs through existing staffing and resources, how are you going to ensure that that, that this does not compromise delivery of other essential projects if you have to divert dollars away to implement this, before we have dollars to actually build the sidewalks?
I'll answer the second question first, and I'll keep it very brief. We have within our ability the opportunity to evaluate how we can phase projects to ensure that we are not harming one project over another. To the extent that we are expected to begin immediately with delivering on these projects, we will look at what we have in our queue, what opportunities we have to shift some dollars, essentially borrow from one project to give to another, to ensure that we can start the work, based on a number of things. Some projects are in design, some projects are in different phases, and so the spending would come later. Some of the things that were referenced in earlier conversations about spending against grants, sometimes you'll see 30 million spent one year and 100 million spent the next year. That's because that's all in construction, and so we have some opportunities to have some flexibility there. We will be very careful to make sure that we're segregating the dollars, not using grant funds to fund work that would be general fund funded. So we'll work with a maintenance operations crew and our engineering services group to ensure that the work that we might shift in order to prioritize or ensure that we're delivering within the timeframe expected, is something that we're able to achieve. Can you repeat your first question? I'm sorry, I didn't have a pen and write it down.
My first question was, given the $460 million annual need just to improve existing pavement assets, how are we defining success within these constraints?
Point of information. That's, the financing's in the resolution, and I'm prepared to speak as direct response to that. Thank you. In the resolution, we say that if this is passed, the Finance Committee will need to hear a proposal on how to pay for this. I have been working with DCA Bieri and his team to come up with a bond issue financing package. So the idea would, and I think the current number that we've been talking about internally, although we haven't gone to the committee yet, that is forthcoming, that will come through the Finance Committee, is $200 million in bonds. We have a constraint on the ability to spend, we cannot execute anything more than, I think, reasonably $50 million per year. So the idea is $200 million over four, five years, which is the horizon of the plan, would allow for that level of execution. So that proposal, that side of this, is forthcoming in the Finance Committee, but it will be paid for through bond issuance and not, not an impact to the current PBOB budget. Thanks.
And then, maybe further back to you, councillor Green, how are we managing public expectations around what this will deliver, especially in these high-need areas, people who have been promised things and have not been delivered those promises, if funding remains uncertain or delayed?
I believe that there's a public engagement component of this. Do you want to speak to that, Director?
Sure. With regard to the funding, again, that, we will leave that for a separate conversation. The expectation is that with the program design, we would do much like we do with many of our projects. We'll do a full engagement process, we will notify in some instances, inform in others, and fully engage, as it depends on the complexity of the project, community members in the process. Sometimes we'll be able to look at a street and say, we can go do that. And that requires a limited amount of engagement. Others, where it's more transformational, potentially, or where we might need to purchase right-of-way frontage, or help people understand that the frontage that's in front of their home or their business really is city right-of-way, and we have the ability to move forward, those conversations will take a little bit more time. But we intend to, on a block-by-block basis, I've shared with the team, as we've had the opportunity to discuss this, this is a block-by-block effort, it's not a traditional effort as relates to how we would deliver some of our larger capital projects. This is a very different design.
Thank you, that's all.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, madam president. I urge my colleagues to consider the merits of this legislation, the tangible value to all Portlanders, the weight of our commitments to our shared future, and join me in passing this ordinance. You will notice later on the agenda, Mayor Wilson has put before us an ordinance, 2025-131, seeking $80 million to construct 1,588 compliant curb ramps annually, per the Creeks settlement agreement, which I supported. But I can't help but notice, we are prioritizing redoing existing ramps over addressing the ADA needs of Portlanders with no sidewalks at all. So I please urge my colleagues to look at this as an investment that we have failed to do in the past, and we are righting our past wrongs, and making sure that everyone in the city of Portland has an opportunity not just to survive, but they have an opportunity to save streets and sidewalks. Thank you.
That ends discussion. Rebecca, could you please call the vote on the now amended agenda item nine? This is document 2025-095, which creates the SIP program.
I'm going to first say that I agree with councillor Smith, that the process should be done the same way as before, and just finish the job on these items. I want to see consistency, and I want to get out of the artificial scarcity of our meeting times. And to that end, I've written a draft ordinance to move to weekly council meetings, and I encourage everyone to get on board with it when that comes to the floor. If we need to reduce other meetings, provide more funding to different parts, let's do it. Second, with apologies to my District Two residents in Cully, as well as in Cathedral Park, I think the clarifications that I received today gives me enough confidence in this item that I feel comfortable with my office and my colleagues' offices in D2 following up with, with PBOB, to ensure that some of the funding would go there. I will add one thing, which is that I have, two things. One, I'm a little concerned about the funding mechanism, so we'll get to that when we get to that, and I'm excited to hear from Finance Committee enough details to, you know, let me get there. And the other thing is, I do want to encourage, especially in light of the Oregonian article councillor Zimmerman referenced earlier, better engagement from PBOB with the community, in particular around where there are competing priorities for this work, and other priorities like our urban canopy and the needs of residents. So with all of that said, I vote aye, and thank you to councillors, to councillor Smith for your leadership.
Ryan.
Yeah, from 2010 to 2019, I had standing meetings in East Portland and the school districts of David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial, where I worked with teachers and councillors before the bell rang, and in the winter, it was quite dark at 7:00 AM. So while driving to Centennial Middle, Lincoln Elementary, and David Douglas or Reynolds Middle School, I witnessed these safety issues firsthand. And this was a consistent topic among the educators and parents of those school districts and those school communities. As such, I was thrilled to support this long-overdue targeted action. I greatly appreciate my colleagues councillor Smith, Green, Clark, and Zimmerman for bringing us a thoughtful vision to address our historic inconsistent investment in pedestrian safety for Portlanders in East Portland and in West Hills. The map certainly tells the story. I support the legislation and look forward to more discussion about the financial feasibility of the work as we move forward. I vote aye.
Koyamalene.
Aye.
Aye.
Novick.
I share some of the concerns that councillor Avalos has raised. We are a city where we have a multi-billion dollar pavement maintenance deficit. That deficit threatens our existence as a city. I am fully aware of the sidewalk needs of districts One and Four. I'm proud to have championed the Fix Our Streets gas tax ballot measure, which is, which has built some sidewalks in districts One and Four. But I think that asking PBOB to spend time planning to do things we have no money to do is putting the cart before the horse. And I also think that, having heard councillor Green, I'm not prepared to say that I would prioritize $200 million for sidewalks before we have addressed the pavement maintenance deficit. If councillor Green was talking about a $6.2 billion bond, then I might be more receptive to that idea. So I regretfully vote no.
Clark.
Councillor Novick, we'll have more on this later. We will have a resolution on asset management to address some of your concerns as well. So I vote aye.
Green.
I think today is going to mark a turning point in the history of this city, where we say we are no longer going to accept neighborhoods in our city to be ignored on the question of infrastructure. There will be related themes that become before this council on how to pay for infrastructure, such as system development charges. Everything must be on the table, we cannot continue with our past practices, we will build sidewalks and streets for all of our neighborhoods. I vote aye.
Zimmerman.
Thanks. You know, many weeks ago, months ago, I think I just muttered the idea of a $100 million sidewalk fund after I saw how much money was sitting in the unused category in a variety of pots of the city. So to the other councillors who really put the meat on the bones of this idea, I am grateful. I'm also looking forward to, to now, you know, a resolution sets direction, and our Finance Committee will come up with the pay-for-it plan. I think it's also important to, you know, there are ways in which we bond that this is not a tax increase, and I think that's important to note for everyday Portlanders. But I'll just remind folks, if we had put just $25 million worth of sidewalks into East Portland since 1986, when it was annexed, we'd be in a different spot. And I don't think that this is going to feel like anything is all that different tomorrow, but when a whole lot of us are retired from this dais and other people are sitting here, my hope is that $50 million investment over every year for the while coming forward will look like it made a difference, and that that map that I held up multiple times today looks different. I vote aye.
Avalos.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate the discussion entertaining my amendments. I, again, just feel that they were important to discuss a larger philosophy. I want to say I am, how important this program is, not just for our city, but especially for communities like the one I represent in East Portland, where the lack of sidewalks and poor condition of our roads has long been a glaring symbol of disinvestment. The vision of SIP to finally bring safety, accessibility, and dignity to every Portlander navigating our public rights of way is one that I strongly support. But as I read the resolution and reviewed the fiscal analysis, I'm concerned that we're moving forward with a directive that isn't fully aligned with our financial reality. The resolution paints an ambitious picture that I agree with, but the city budget office and PBOB's own fiscal note make clear, there's currently no committed funding for implementation. So, in fact, PBOB faces a massive deficit, deficit over the next five years, which will force hard choices about what we can afford and when. That is not a reason to say no. It's a reason to say, let's be clear-eyed, responsible, and transparent with our community about what's possible. Thank you to the sponsors, I look forward to working together to make sure this becomes a reality we can be proud of, and I vote aye.
Dunphy.
When I was running for office, I got made fun of on Reddit for how often I talked about East Portland's sidewalks. I'm jealous that my colleague councillor Smith beat me to the punch, I enthusiastically vote aye.
Smith.
You know, this is a long time coming. We have been trying to get this non-revenue SIP direction to PBOB. And what this resolution is, just so that the folks who are watching this on TV, this is to mandate that PBOB create a four-year plan, that it prioritizes how they would put new sidewalks, paving, potholes, tree canopies. And the thing that we didn't talk about, but we should be, we're in the early stages of a recession. Putting $50 million or $100 million on the street, it is going to create jobs. We are going to make sure that our minority contractors have an opportunity to have an opportunity to help us steer the ship on our economy in the city of Portland. We're going to make sure that our young people who are in summer works, and who are in our pre-apprenticeship programs, by the way, that Prosper Portland pays for, that they now have a project to be an apprentice on. Because you can't be an apprentice until you have a project that you can be on. And if we decide to fund this for the four or five years, some of those folks will be able to get their journeyman's license on SIP. And I like what I heard earlier from the young lady who said, sip and swim. If we don't pass this, we're going to have to sip or swim. And I think that we all want the right things for the most marginalized, minimized, underrepresented, underserved, and not served communities in the entire city. So I want to thank my colleagues for recognizing that this is very important, and that it's critical, and that it is something that we all recognize that needs to be done. Director Williams, thank you for your comments, thank you for giving us a realistic idea of what could actually be done, because as you heard me before, I said, let's do 400 million, and, you know, could we actually do $100 million a year? And you, you actually curbed my, my idea of what the possible could be. And so I appreciate that. And I will say, I vote aye for SIP.
Pertle Guinea. Pirtleguine.
Aye.
With 11 ayes and one no, the resolution is adopted as amended.
Thank you, counselors. We are now moving on to Item 10 on our agenda. Rebecca, can you please read the agenda item?
Authorize revenue bonds in an amount sufficient to provide not more than $80 million to finance curb, ramp, and street improvement projects.
Counselors, this is a second reading of this ordinance. We had discussion on this at our last council meeting. We have an opportunity for more discussion if folks would like, and then we will call for a vote. Counselor Smith.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I heard a lot of conversation about, do we have the money to do these ADA curb ramps? And I like to hear that same kind of discussion about challenging the mayor about his idea to put in ADA ramps in the city of Portland. I think this is important. I think it will actually go in line with SIP. And to be able to put those ADA ramps in areas that we have not historically put them, and this is something that I would urge my colleagues to support.
Thank you, counselors. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion. So Rebecca, can you please call the roll?
Canal.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Pirtleguine.
With gratitude for our short work here, aye.
12 ayes, ordinances passed.
Could you please read Agenda Item 11?
Add Sustainability and Climate Commission Code.
Counselors, this is also a second reading. We discussed this agenda item at our last meeting. It was amended extensively in committee. Is there any discussion on the agenda item? Seeing no one in the queue, Rebecca, can you please call the roll?
Canal.
I look forward to circling back on the numerical cap on members and the exact number, but despite that not being addressed here, I think it's still a really, really good piece of work by everybody involved. Thank you. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyamalene.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith. Pirtleguine.
Aye.
And 12 ayes, it is passed as amended.
Thank you. Counselors, our next two agenda items are settlement ordinances. These are both emergency ordinances. I hope we will be able to vote on them both today. I want to flag that one of these two items will likely have extensive questions about policy. I know a number of us often ask about whether policy changes have been made to ensure that we don't end up in the same situation, paying out a similar amount of money again. Because we're tight on time, I am going to look to our co-chairs of our Community and Public Safety Committee and ask that if those questions arise, that be something that perhaps you take up in committee if we don't have time for the full discussion today. With that, Rebecca, could you please read Agenda Item 12?
Pay settlement of Joseph Johnson civil rights lawsuit for the sum of $100,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau.
Thank you, and I believe we have David Farrow from Risk Management. And is it Chief Dobson today who we have? Okay, please come on up. And it looks like David is online with us.
Good morning, Council. I'm Dave Farrow with Risk Management. This ordinance will approve the settlement of a lawsuit arising from Joseph Johnson's encounter with Portland police in Northwest Portland in the early morning hours of March 25th, 2023. Just after midnight, officers observed a stolen weapon inside a parked unoccupied vehicle. And so they prepared to disable the vehicle and detain the occupants who returned to it. About two hours later, Mr. Johnson and three others returned to the vehicle, and he alleges the tires deflated when he started to drive. Then when he got out, an officer arrested him on suspicion of possessing a stolen weapon. He alleges the officer pushed him against the hood of the vehicle, handcuffed him, and detained him for 30 minutes, both in public on the street and then in the back of a PPP vehicle, despite officers knowing that he had no criminal record and despite a different occupant of the vehicle acknowledging ownership of the stolen weapon. He also alleges that he notified officers of a medical condition, be exacerbated by being handcuffed, and that an officer unlawfully coerced him into surrendering his own lawfully licensed firearm while he was being detained, a different firearm from the stolen weapon. He filed suit in federal court against the city and several officers who were present, asserting claims for violations of his constitutional rights and for false arrest and battery under state law. After reviewing the PPP records relating to this incident, Risk Management determined that officers had not prepared reports regarding their interactions with Mr. Johnson and their probable cause to arrest him. After interviewing Mr. Johnson, Risk Management of PPP determined that the best interest of the city would be served by resolving his claim and lawsuit. We negotiated, that is to say, risk, negotiated informally with his attorney, and we agreed on a settlement of $100,000 inclusive of all attorney fees to resolve this claim and lawsuit. The settlement avoids the cost of defending the city and the officers from the lawsuit and protects the risk, protects against the risk of a higher verdict at trial plus an award of his attorney fees. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Madam President, as well as the council. This was pre, before we had...
Could you please introduce yourself first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Craig Dobson with the Portland Police Bureau Assistant Chief. This was pre-body-worn camera. Prior to this, unfortunately, this event was investigated as stated, and in it, it was determined that there was a mis, several miscommunication or communication gaps between the two units who, at that time, had not worked regularly together. And in that, there was a misunderstanding of who was point in this. As the result of the investigation, four members from those two units did receive corrective action for failing to write the appropriate reports.
Thank you. Do we have public testimony on this agenda item, Rebecca?
We do. We have three people signed up. The first is Mark Porus. Mark is joining us online.
Okay, counselors, I think we're going to take public testimony and then we'll move into discussion. Mark, if you are ready, please go ahead and unmute, and you can share your comments with us.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Mark Porus. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. We understand that Joseph Johnson and the city have come to an agreement to settle this civil rights lawsuit for $100,000, and we have no objection. Since 1992, Portland Cop Watch has been working towards a police bureau that's free of brutality, corruption, and racism. We testify on settlements like this to prompt our elected officials to discuss the harms done by city employees and to prevent them from ever happening again. I appreciate Mr. Farrow's description of the incident, Chief Dobson's presence here today. My apologies, but you're going to hear the description all over again. The incident that led to this settlement occurred in Old Town, and the complaint names eight PPP officers as well as nine unnamed officers. From court records, we learned that on the night of March 24th, 2023, Mr. Johnson, along with three friends, all of whom are African-American, were among the many people enjoying the entertainment district nightlife that evening. The four friends arrived in the same vehicle, a white Chrysler 300 that was rented by one of the friends, a Mr. Patterson, who was visiting from out of town. Again, from court records, a short synopsis of what happened. Police on foot patrol saw a gun on the backseat floor of the unoccupied parked Chrysler. Police said they could see the serial number on the gun, so they called it in and determined the gun was stolen. It's unclear from the records whether or not that gun was actually stolen. Police learned that the car was a rental. They proceeded to put spike strips around all four wheels of the car. When the friends returned to the car, police did not confront them, but rather waited for Mr. Johnson to back up the car, and the spike strips blew out the tires. When Mr. Johnson got out of the car to see what happened, he was forcibly detained, handcuffed with the hands behind his back, and placed in a police car for 30 minutes, despite having asked officers to be gentle because he has multiple sclerosis. Mr. Johnson told police he had a legally owned firearm in the glove compartment, and the police seized his gun. It's unclear from court documents. When Mr. Johnson and his companions were released, however, court documents do state that no criminal charges were filed against any of the occupants. Was the allegedly stolen gun a pretextual justification for the officers to unlawfully and unreasonably detain, search, seize, and arrest Mr. Johnson, as the complaint proffers? We noticed from the names of the officers involved in the incident that many, if not all of them, either are or were members of the Focused Intervention Team, or FIT. The FIT is the police bureau's current iteration of specialty unit with a mission to reduce gun violence. It's supposedly more responsive to community guidance than prior gun or gang units, because there is an oversight group called the Focused Intervention Team Community Oversight Group, FITCOG, which is tasked with making recommendations to PPP about gun violence, response strategies through a racial and social justice lens. We forwarded the information about this settlement onto the FITCOG, as they're well-situated to advise the police bureau on matters where racial profiling is or may be involved. We hope Mr. Johnson and his friends have fully recovered from this incident. Portland Cop Watch will continue to monitor these lawsuits for indications of police misconduct, including racial profiling and excessive use of force. Finally, we appreciate that the Bureau Claims Data Exhibit attached to the settlement is there, and we look forward to seeing more information on there, including costs incurred by the city attorney in the future. Thank you.
Next is Bridge Crane, Simka Johnson.
Thank you.
And some filed copies for the different levels of mayor and administrator and whatever else we got going on on the agenda now. Good morning. What a day. Earlier, oh, I'm Bridge Crane Charles, Simka Johnson.
Thank you.
Some of you, with a long history, Commissioner Novick, are familiar with bridge cranes and Operation Bridge Crane, as covered by OPB back in 2016, the departure mayor hails, rushing through his police contract. Portland Cop Watch, even after the sad passing of the Enhandlements, still doing an excellent job. We appreciate that some members of the council, specifically on the city website, commemorate the passing of something like a theater nerd from a posh suburb, I think is how Zaeem Sheikh is going to describe it, or did describe it a couple days ago in the Oregonian. In the next agenda item, the actual victim of Portland police violence is on the smart sheet, along with one of their attorneys, to talk with us. Earlier in this proceeding, Counselor Canal talked about settlements under $50,000. And sadly, since the day of Commissioner Novick's Bridge Crane, many of us in your constituents feel that you have not put forth a good, transparent system to track especially police liability settlements, but also other bureaus' liability settlements. Good governance means we should have employees who continually reduce the times they make mistakes that force us to pay out tax dollars in settlements. So right now, we're dealing with a civil rights violation on this agenda item that happened over two years ago. On the next agenda item, we'll be dealing with violence and civil rights violations and injuries that happened five years ago. 2020 was a busy time for risk management. But I do hope that, as we put together the public safety and whatever the policies are, that we will get better transparency on these agenda items. It was great that Portland Cop Watch went into the nitty-gritty, but really, you could attach all that information right on the agenda. We shouldn't have to have a PACER subscription to go and find out the details and see what was the civil rights violation. That is so severe that you all guys are getting ready to sign off on a $100,000 check so you can go to the next item, where you're going to give away, not give away, the person suffered and merits this money, $375,000. I know most of you are very attentive to stopping this. We don't want our constituents, our neighbors, experiencing physical injury or even violation of their civil rights that falls short of injury. So consider having a tracking system that is included when you put this on the agenda so we'll know that, just looking at this, it was the third civil rights violation of '23, or it was the 18th case of violence during 2020.
I'm sorry, but we need to move to the next person signing.
I'll be back.
Thank you.
Next is Edith Gillis. Edith is online.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please introduce yourself and then go right ahead.
And I want you to vote yes, but at the same time, I want you to be much more diligent in following the, all of the recommendations of the Portland Police Accountability Commission and National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. I am not speaking for the organization, but I am a member of the Pacific Northwest Family Circle, whose loved ones have been murdered by police. We have several hundred of our loved ones, and of course, there are many more than that than their families have wanted to have them uplifted on our webpage. I want to be as honor of Bill Brown, James Chassie, Bradley Morgan, Juanice Ormus Hayes, Terrell Johnson, John Ella-Fetch, Andre Gladin, Tiddy Gully, and Keep Notice, many, many more, who have been killed by the Portland police. This would be changed if we had better policy and practice and accountability. And I want us to make sure that we pay our victims of crimes far more than this, but it not come from our general fund, but it come from the Portland Police Bureau and from officers who must be licensed, bonded, and insured and held accountable. We need to have different recruitment, training, oversight, accountability, independent, and superior medical examiners. We need to have not only cameras, which sometimes are a farce for us, because they can easily block them or turn them off or lose the data or control the data, but it has to be continually uploaded and civilian oversight. And, you know, these sort of things, we need to have cameras and civilian oversight instead of police stop and frisk. We need to change the situations in which we have the police intervening and using these tactics. And training alone, all these, all these different tactics that people have for a little bit of superficial stuff were used by people in Minneapolis-St. Paul before they combined killing someone. So we need to make sure that we prevent this from happening. And I also want us to have high-chart budgeting. So we show that the majority of our city budget is spent on policing and change that to have it due to real police and crime prevention. And then we don't have to do this, but when we have civilians, have them paid better, not only for physical, but also for mental health and for the trauma that this goes on, and to the larger community that is traumatized each time we allow this criminal behavior.
That completes testimony.
Counselors, we'll now move into discussion. Counselor Canal.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for including information in the ordinance that answers my previous questions about claims data and the allegations. It helps save us time to have this data in advance. I'd also love to have some of the explanatory information from the relevant bureau, which is obviously not just police, in this particular case it is, in advance, but very helpful, and thank you for it, Chief. And then finally, to just suggest to Risk Management to restore the column about city attorney costs, which was in previous briefings. attorney costs, which was in previous briefings. Does this claims data, this is a question to Mr. Pharoah, does this claims data include lawsuits that we lost or only those which were settled?
It includes all payments. So if there was a judgment, so it includes claims, claims that went to suit, claims that went to suit and verdict where a payment was made on a judgment. So it's all of that and all of the payments combined.
Great. Thank you. To Chief Dobson, thank you for giving us the information on the corrective action numbers and things like that. That's incredibly transparent. I don't think I've ever heard that before, and I appreciate it. You spoke to body worn cameras, and that's a huge difference from two years ago to now. In terms of broader than just for the individuals on the report writing side, has any other policy change occurred? And then are there any policy changes that you might be able to speak to on the alleged Fourth Amendment violation that this claim alleges?
Could you find that question just a little bit more, please, for me? The first part of your question there?
So a response to the officers who allegedly did not write a report theoretically included the corrective action, I know you might not be able to say that that was one for one, and I acknowledge that, but had there been any policy or broader changes to help promote, for example, reducing the likelihood of the miscommunication you talked about between the two teams?
So, yes, internally, within the unit, there was clarification as well as SOP pushed out, so that the rest of the bureau would understand better how they would operate. So if you called a certain unit, how they would either take over the call or be there to support the call.
And is the answer to the question that both teams would write a report in the future, or is it, is it which?
Again, it's situational, and so it does depend on what happens. But there was clarity added to everybody that takes police action absolutely needs to write a report.
Got it. Thanks. And then anything on the Fourth Amendment side? Have there been any policy changes as it relates to alleged violations of the Fourth Amendment around unreasonable search and seizure?
Because this was a settlement, and I wasn't part of that conversation, I can't speak to that because I don't have the details.
Great. Thank you. I'd love to get the SOP at some point in the future, just doesn't need to be right now. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. I just want to set some context for what we're talking about. This is the entertainment detail in Old Town Chinatown, where a few years ago, we set up a pretty robust police detail to combat what had become the most shooting, small amount of blocks, most shooting blocks in our city at that time. And that there are parking lots in this neighborhood where folks would leave their guns in their car because they knew they couldn't get through the club's security, to then return to their car when it was time to have a fight. So there's some context that matters for me in this, and I, in Mr. Pharoah's discussion, you cited that this person was held for, I think you said, 30 minutes because they found an illegal firearm, and then eventually determined that this person also had a legal firearm. And the way it was described is that somehow the 30 minutes was a violation. What I'm trying to understand is, it seems reasonable to me of, if you find an illegal firearm in a person's vehicle, that there will be a certain amount of time to determine whose weapon that is, and that being held during that time and during that, I guess the right word would be investigation, seems okay, but it sounds like the 30 minutes was a concern. So what is the right amount of time? Is it three minutes, 30 minutes, 60 minutes, that one can be held? We wouldn't be in a settlement situation while we determined whether or not the illegal gun sitting on your car seat is yours or not. This seems confusing to me in these documents, and I pose that to either one of the gentlemen who are comfortable answering.
So I would say that the challenge in this case was because reports weren't written correct, weren't written, we can't justify the time length that was actually there of the detention or the arrest.
That makes sense to me. Do we know how long it was until the lawful firearm was returned to the subject in this situation?
I do not have that information.
I think that I am able to see some of the, you know, there were failures in report writing, but I'm also trying to understand the mindset that if you drive around with an illegal firearm in your car and leave it in plain view, so that somebody walking by in a parking lot can see it, that we now settle for $100,000. I think maybe a $1 check to say, okay, we screwed up our report writing, but also you or your party was engaged in some illegal stuff with illegal firearms. This seems odd to me, and it seems like an avoidance of a bigger discussion in court. But I appreciate, I will, I will say, I really appreciate the transparency that has come from you, Chief, so thank you for that. And I think being able to admit where we didn't do the right thing by policy, procedure, and law is always good to be able to talk out loud about. But this is a challenging area in my district that went from a whole lot of gun violence to a lot less gun violence because of very proactive entertainment detail policing down there. And I think those have been big improvements, and I wouldn't want to walk away from that. But I also think sending a message that illegal guns in your car gets you $100,000 payment because somebody forgot to write a report is concerning.
Counselor, seeing nobody else in the queue, I believe Rebecca, can you call the role on this? Canal?
Thank you for answering the questions. Thank you for bringing this information forward and putting more of it in writing. I look forward to that continuing as we iterate this process under a new counsel. I think it's a vital step to view this in the way that we've received from attorneys, which is that there is a risk we would lose a lawsuit, and this was an agreed upon settlement. So from that perspective, it makes more sense to me. I had maybe a few different questions about some of this process as well. But with all that said, I will vote aye. Thank you.
Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Koyamalene?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green? Zimmerman?
No.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hertle-Ginni?
Aye.
And the ordinance passes. Rebecca, could you please read Agenda Item 13? And Deputy Chief, I think we're gonna, do we have you for this one as well?
I think so.
Okay. Item 13, Pay Settlement of Megan Upbrook Bodily Injury Lawsuit for the Sum of $375,000 involving the Portland Police Bureau. Thank you. We have a number of folks up here, so go ahead. In whatever order you want to present to us.
Good afternoon. My name is Caroline Turco. I'm an attorney in the litigation section of the City Attorney's Office. I'm here with Mike Porter, also an attorney in the City Attorney's Office, and Assistant Chief Dobson, who's already spoken. We're here on the settlement of the lawsuit brought by Megan Upbrook. This ordinance provides for the settlement of $375,000. This lawsuit was filed in April 2022, and it claims violations of plaintiff's Fourth Amendment rights against excessive force, as well as First Amendment rights to free assembly and free speech. Additional allegations included municipal liability for unlawful practices in crowd control and state tort claims for assault, battery, and negligence. The lawsuit arises from injuries Megan Upbrook sustained during protests near Portland Police Bureau's North Precinct on the evening of June 25, 2020, into the morning of June 26. She alleges that she suffered injuries from a rubber ball distraction device, commonly called an RBDD. It was deployed by a member of the rapid response team to disperse protesters. It rolled beneath her and exploded. Ms. Upbrook sustained burns, bruising, shrapnel wounds, and had ongoing complaints related to claimed concussion and visual disturbances. Following the 2020 protests, the Portland Police Bureau conducted a comprehensive review of its crowd control policies. This review resulted in the decision to discontinue the use of rubber ball distraction devices. PBB has since reduced their inventory to zero, and they will not return to the use of RBDDs. The City Attorney's Office, Risk Management, and the Portland Police Bureau recommend this settlement as it mitigates against financial and legal risks, including potential attorney fees should the case proceed to trial. We recommend approval of the ordinance authorizing the settlement, and we're available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have Joseph Jesse online from Risk Management. Mr. Jesse, do you have anything to add?
No.
Anything else from folks at the table? Okay, Rebecca, do we have public testimony signed up for this agenda item?
We do. First is Megan Upbrook.
Megan, thank you for being here.
I don't know who said that, but thank you.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, and then you can go right, jump right in.
Hi, my name is Megan Upbrook, and first I'd like to say, I kind of want to go over what a rubber ball distraction device is. So it is, it looks like a grenade. It is a little bit larger than, I would say, a baseball. And inside it is 50 rubber pellets that, when the pin is pulled and it is thrown, it explodes with, not the force of light, but the force of sound, so at the speed of sound. And the 50 rubber balls are supposed to fly out and cause some sort of disturbance, getting people to disperse, along with smoke and an intense, like sonic, sound, and then it explodes. So there's like heat, fire. When that was thrown at me, it wasn't thrown near me. It hit my feet and it exploded on my body. All presumably of the shrapnel rubber balls inside hit me. Part of it lodged into my chest. It blew away part, like chunks, of both of my legs. The force of the blast would kill so much flesh that I eventually had to have debridements, where they would take a scalpel and cut away the dead tissue, and I was left with scars on both of my legs. At the time that it exploded, I was unable to hear anything. All I could see was stars. It blew my phone out of my hand, and I was only able to make it about a quarter block before I couldn't walk anymore. And the medics wrapped me up, took me to the emergency room. I was diagnosed with a concussion and later post-concussive disorder. I was unable to work as academic and career advisor, which I've done for almost 10 years. I also work as a mental health therapist and had to close my practice because the injuries from the concussion made it so that I couldn't see very well. I was light sensitive, and I couldn't stay on Zoom, because this was 2020, so all therapy was done remotely. And, sorry. So in kind of summary, there wasn't an aspect of my life that wasn't impacted by this experience of violence, and I think that there needs to be more done to protect protesters, especially now as First Amendment rights are being more and more reduced. And I think it's that we need not forget that the reason we were there was because of police brutality perpetrated on Black community members by Portland police. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I know that sharing your experience is not easy. We appreciate it. Next is Victoria Lowe.
Can I stay seated here?
Right ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Lowe. I am one of Megan's attorneys. I'm a civil rights lawyer in Portland. I'm here to tell the council what this case is about. We are in support of this settlement because this case is about a bomb that exploded in North Portland in a residential neighborhood on my client's body. By everyone involved in the case, her only mistake was that she was in a street after being told to disperse. She had committed no crimes. She was voicing her opposition to police policy, as is her First Amendment right. Megan's story is one of many. Counselors, I submitted our Second Amendment complaint for you to review. This is a public filing. It is allegations. Those have not been proven in court. However, the complaint cites news articles dating back to 2014 detailing how the Portland Police have been injuring anti-police protesters with flashbangs. In 2014 is when I saw evidence that this started. 2018, the Portland Police shot a flashbang at a counter demonstration to a Proud Boy march, and the flashbang lodged in the brain of a protester through a helmet. On May 29, 2024, the Portland City Council heard from the Portland Police on what they called an emergency ordinance to approve a budget item for nearly $30,000 more for the Portland Police to purchase more munitions for crowd control, including 100 flashbangs. We heard before me that the Portland Police has reduced their inventory of rubber ball distraction devices to zero. Don't be distracted by their name game. The names are all different. A nationally renowned expert on these weapons that I spoke with told me that the explosive devices in each one of these weapons are the same. So what is the difference? Does it matter what kind of payload it was inside? The bomb that exploded at Megan's feet? During 2020 in Seattle, a flashbang exploded on a protester, and she had three heart attacks in the instances following that. You can look it up. That article is also in the complaint. Now, more than ever, it is critical for the City Council to protect the right to protest.
Thank you very much. Rebecca, do we have additional testimony?
We do. Next is Mark Porus. Mark is online.
Okay. Mark, go right ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Hi again, counsel. My name is Mark Porus. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm with the group Portland Cop Watch. We understand that Megan Upbrook and the city have come to this agreement to settle the bodily injury lawsuit for $375,000, and we have no objection. It's worth repeating again that since 1992, Portland Cop Watch has been working towards a police bureau that is free of brutality, corruption, and racism. And we testify in these settlements to prompt you to discuss the harms done by city employees and the policies that allow it to happen. We appreciate that Ms. Upbrook and her attorney are present today. We're grateful for them sharing the details of the incident, and I don't want to repeat them. We hope that Ms. Upbrook is able to recover fully from the harms that were caused by PBB. We appreciate that PBB will no longer use flashbangs. Now, from court records, we understand that Detective Eric Cammerer, who fired that flashbang grenade that caused so much harm to Ms. Upbrook as she was filming the police with her phone, posing no threat to officers or other demonstrators. Detective Cammerer's been with the Portland Police Bureau since 1994. For context, Chief Day started at PBB in 1990, four years prior. At the time of the incident, Cammerer was a member of the rapid response team. In 2021, the entire rapid response team resigned from their positions when one officer was indicted for excessive use of force. In 2022, the Oregon Department of Justice investigated Cammerer's misconduct during the 2020 protests. The DOJ investigated four other occasions on which he was accused of using excessive force against protesters. They found insufficient ed- They found insufficient evidence to bring criminal charges against him. Ms. Upbrook's incident was not one of the four that the DOJ went into. And while he's not yet been indicted, this is not the first time Cammerer's cost the city money for misconduct, yet he remains a P P B employee to this day. Ms. Upbrook was quoted in a December 22 Willamette Week article saying, "I want to expose the misconduct of the city and the P P B and make sure this doesn't happen to anyone else." And two months ago, Council President Pertle-Ginny stated during the $938,328 index newspaper settlement, "I never want to hear that we have to settle for the same issues more than once." So here we are again. Our chief of police and this detective who's harmed so many community members have been colleagues for over 30 years. When Chief Day came out of retirement to lead the bureau, one of his stated goals was transparency and accountability. He's since replaced that with changing the dynamic between the police and the people they serve, which is insufficient without an acknowledgement of what the dynamic actually is and without doing the work to change the dynamic for the benefit of the people who are policed by P P B. Chief Day's two other top priorities are to reduce crime and the fear of crime and organizational growth and development. Depending on what's meant by changing the dynamic, it feels like the bureau prioritizes the comfort and well-being of police officers over the safety of community members. Transparency and accountability, they are but an afterthought. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Porras. Bridget Crane, Simka Johnson.
Thank you. And for the record, I am indeed Bridget Crane Simka Johnson. You know, this one's even worse than when I was here just a few minutes ago. And although she was very eloquent, I think it's important to do what Cop Watch didn't do and say that a woman, a mental health professional, was watching out for the well-being of her community, and the Portland Police Bureau fired on her, put an explosive at her feet, incapacitated her to such an extent that she had to be evacuated by medics and presumably from that neighborhood went to a manual hospital, where they had to, medical professionals had to remove dead slash, probably over a period of extended care. So in earlier comments on the prior item, Ms. Gillis talked about the amount. You're getting off easy for the actual level of pain and suffering caused. I do hope that we come around again to be here in this room in this format and specifically cite the exact dollar amount of settlements that came from the Portland police attacking their citizens and constituents, particularly during 2020. But as the attorney mentioned, flashbangs, she knows they were documented during, going back to 2014. We know that in 2011, I don't think Novick was here yet, but people were getting brutalized right there as Occupy protests was pushed out of the park. There's probably a price tag that you could associate with that. So maybe, you know, I hate to be all doom and gloom, so I wish that this had been presented with maybe some positive trends. I'm not Portland Cop Watch. They publish it. But the Portland Police Department, since they've got so much money, quarter billion dollars, could maybe do better PR and at least say, "We haven't killed anybody for 132 days. Give us a break." And that'd actually be a good thing for you as a city that has lots of different employees, and you have all those posters. And in some workplaces, they have signs that say, "This is a safe workplace. No on-the-job injuries for so many days." And I might have to get more engaged with Portland Cop Watch so that they have a website that says how long it's been since there's been an injury by police to people who aren't even engaged in crime. That's something I think that's very difficult, even in the minds of most of us who've been successfully and peacefully in the streets on many of these weekends and on May Day with the 50-51 movement. Thank God, no violence there. But Mr. Zimmerman pointed out that somebody with an illegal gun was in Old Town Chinatown. People could see the gun in the car. I can walk past parking lots where people have been killed by police, Club Rouge, Club Rogue, whatever it is there. So those people, the only close to injury was a person with MS, had their civil rights violated. Yet here, we have a person who is not anywhere near an illegal gun, doing nothing illegal, and has had their legs maimed. So hopefully, we're trending to have the police do better. Thank you very much for keeping, working on that.
Thank you. Edith Gillis, Edith is online.
Hello, my name is Edith Gillis. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The U.S. Constitution and the Oregon State Constitution require all government to not restrict the First Amendment rights and the duties of civilians to hold government, including police, accountable. It is our job. We must do that. I have been in Portland for 42 years, testifying in City Council. I have been on the streets as an observer, as a de-escalator, peacekeeper, and as a street medic. I know the same person who shot her has shot and killed other people. I have seen videos. I have talked with the victims. I have seen photos that are deleted from the system. After so many years, they get to do the crimes again. And so City Council doesn't even know. And sometimes the next chief of police don't know. Chief of Police Danielle Outlaw already lost lawsuits in Oakland, California, about flashbang concussion grenades. I already have seen, over and over and over, Portland police claiming there's a riot or that they had a right to disperse crowds. First of all, I see no legitimacy in police stopping people from gathering together and saying, "This is a problem. Solve it." It's not up to the police to change it. But they are very unequal in their enforcement. They escort white supremacists, violent terrorists, abusers, murderers, and escort them. They give them bus passes on 82nd. They know that they have all these illegal guns. But nonviolent medics, nonviolent observers are targeted by police, not only in those situations where those targeted victims have done nothing wrong, but then they will also go after them, harass them at their house, at their work, pull them over with false arrests or false tickets to raise their car insurance. This is a pattern that's gone a long time. And I've seen so many people who have been so injured and are no longer able to pay taxes, no longer able to do the good they need to do. And so I think this is a petty, puny little amount that should not, you should not settle for such a teeny amount. We need to make sure that police are held accountable and that doesn't hold any of the police who have done these wrongs accountable. And we need to change our policies that allow police to disperse crowds. And when there are safety issues, police do a lousy job of it. And when I've seen people injured, police have prevented ambulances or medics from caring for them. And police have prevented even people coming to City Council, throwing people down the marble staircase when they want to hold police accountable.
Edith, thank you for your testimony today.
That concludes testimony.
Counselors, we are now moving into discussion. I don't see anybody in the queue. Going once, Counselor Canell.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Risk Management, City Attorneys, and to P P B's leadership for the presentation. And in particular, thank you to the claimant and attorney for testifying, as well as all the other testifiers. I have two questions. The first one is, you know, we heard specifically that P P B has reduced its inventory of these R B D Ds to zero and also that "we would not be returning to use these," I believe was the near quote. But also, one of the testifiers pointed out that we replenished munitions last year for crowd control. Are those different? And what rule or requirement is there to not return to using this particular one? In other words, is that intent or requirement in code? Is it in the settlement agreement? Or is it in directives?
So within the R B D D, state law changed, which makes it not compatible with state law. And so that has been removed from our inventory and will be, continue to be removed.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question is, you know, last time we talked about the previous ordinance, we talked about the Fourth Amendment. This one alleges First Amendment violations. Can you speak to, big picture, because I know there's been a lot of things that P P B has done since 2020, what has taken place with relation to First Amendment protections in P P B directives, SOPs, practices, et cetera? I know there's been a lot, so I'll happily take a summary.
So the summary, we have rewritten our crowd public order ordinance or our policy within that. We've also gotten a grant to work within, with Professor Stott from England, to help us understand and better utilize dialogue policing, which is an intelligence-led form of approaching public order so that we're based on four pillars, one being education, communication, facilitation, and then finally differentiation. And so I think in the past several months, you've seen a different style of policing from us when it comes to public order events. We've had several large public order events that have gone extremely peaceful. And we're going to continue down that route of facilitating events, working with our dialogue officers to ensure that we have good communication with folks and that we can facilitate those lawful events and then only arrest those individuals who are committing crimes that are affecting the public or the tenure of the event itself.
Can you speak to what happens when, in current practice, when a group that is attempting to hold a First Amendment-related event does not want to engage in dialogue or pre-clear routes or anything like that with the Portland police?
So again, First Amendment is to us in protecting that right. People have the ability to choose to speak to us or not. It always helps when folks want to work with the city to ensure that we can have a safe route for them and that they aren't choosing a route that maybe gets them into trouble with other traffic or other citizens. And so we always encourage that, but we're not going to force that. If it's a peaceful assembly, we're not going to interfere with that in any way unless there's criminal activity that indicates that we've got to handle something that becomes an emergency, if you will, where someone might be hurt because of the actions of the event itself.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Counselors, seeing no further discussion, I would ask Rebecca to call the roll for a vote. Canell.
Colleagues, I'm going to support this settlement and vote yes in a moment. All my process comments and comments on what should be in the ordinance and exhibits for the last ordinance apply here, too. I have two things I want to just raise among the many concerns raised by this situation and the ordinance. First, we have settlements that come later than the events that they occur. There's a larger gap sometimes for when there's a large number of incidents, such as 2020, which the protest response will continue to have claims for a while. It's not a delay. Things just take time to file, settle, and bring it to counsel. It doesn't mean anyone's doing anything wrong. But the gap has one negative result, which is that even if we have changes to policy, it takes a long time for Portlanders to see that and to build trust. We need to be good at something for years before people will start to believe it. And the length of time is proportional to the length and magnitude of the pattern of actions that break trust. And second, we need to talk about protests. And I understand that once an independent, neutral third party determines that there's a riot, that we probably do need a police response. And I think that there's no other tool that currently exists for that. But I do think that there is a near here to revisit the work of the Citizen Review Committee and some of the other work that's been done to talk about why is our first line of interaction with First Amendment events, the police, and to look at finding another solution for that over time. I don't believe that this is going to be... overtime is not a, that was not an intentional pun, but it's also a pun, I guess, because of overtime costs. But, you know, I do think that that's a conversation that I hope that this conversation, this incident and this settlement helps bring back into the forefront of our minds. With that, I can't speak for anyone else, but in my role, I do want to apologize to the person who had this happen to them. And with that, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Kwayal Maline.
Aye.
Mario.
I just want to thank Megan for their courage and bravery coming up here and sharing their experience. That's not easy to do, and I vote aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
I'd also like to thank Megan for being here today. I appreciate your testimony and hope you're healing. I vote aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Avalos.
Megan, thank you for your testimony. I'm very sorry for what happened to you, and I'm committed to ensuring we respond with policy suggestions to ensure this doesn't keep happening. I vote aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Pertle-Ginny.
Megan, thank you for being here. I want to echo my colleague's gratitude for your bravery to our bureau. I know that we've had state law changes that have directed us to make changes, but I hope that we don't just rely on direction from others and that incidences like this also lead to evaluations of any changes that we need to make. In addition to that internally, with that, I vote aye.
Twelve ayes. The ordinance passes.
Thank you.
I am remembering correctly, we now have a reordering of our agenda. And, Counselors, we are moving to the last item on our agenda, which is, is that 21?
21.
Agenda item 21. While I get myself there, we have a committee staff summary from Ashley Hernandez, which we'll start with.
Oh, we need to read that.
I'm sorry. Would you like to read this agenda item, Rebecca?
I sure would. Item 21, add fair wage policy code for certain city service contracts.
Thank you. Ashley, can you give us an overview of what happened in committee?
Madam President, Counselors, for the record, I'm Ashley Hernandez. I serve as, I serve to staff the Labor Workforce Development Committee. The ordinance document number 2025, 2022-5178 was considered the Labor Workforce Committee on April 24th, where it was referred as amended, I mean, when it was referred to City Council with recommendation it be passed. The ordinance adds CD Code Chapter 5.70 for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The hourly rate for contracts involved cover services will be set as $19.80. In fiscal year 2025, 2026, this hourly rate will be adjusted to $19.80 plus percentage increase based on cost of living COLA determined by Consumer Price Index Urban Wages earnings and for the West Region. The full impact statement on this item includes fiscal and budgetary impacts, community impacts, and community involvement. fiscal and budgetary impacts, community impacts, and community involvement. One person submitted written testimony after the committee highlighting the fairness of the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Smith, you were presiding over that meeting. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate you coming forward and giving us this testimony. I don't have anything to add, but I do support this amendment. It came through the Labor and Workforce Development Committee, and I believe it was a 5-0 vote. And so we didn't have any problems with this, and we want to make sure that all of our workers, employees, that they're being treated with dignity and respect.
Thank you. Counselor Dunphy, you are the carrier of this item. Would you like to give us any information about why you brought it forward?
Absolutely. Colleagues, in late 2024, the previous city council, the guidance of the auditor at wonder, went a code revision and removed roughly 600 pages of what was deemed as duplicative code. Included in that was the city's decades-old fair wage policy. This is a statement of plainly declaring what an employee or contractor of the city should be entitled to as a, you know, simply by virtue of being a city contractor or city employee. It was brought to our attention by our friends at SEIU that this policy was removed. This action puts it back. It simply adds updated language to our current practices and includes a call out for escalating cost of living. We checked in with every city bureau who this applies to, and almost unanimously, none of them knew that the code was gone. So no policies will be changed, and there should not be any additional impacts. In fact, everybody was moving forward, but I do want to express my thanks to SEIU for bringing this to our attention. And I urge you all to help. Well, this is a non-emergency ordinance, so we do not need to vote today, but I urge your support.
Thank you. Rebecca, I believe we have public testimony signed up. Is that correct? We do. We have two people signed up. Maria Flores and Gloria Hernandez. Perfect. As well, that would be great.
Great. For the record, my name is Yasmin Ibarra. I'm the political director for SEIU Local 49, and I'll be providing translation for these two women.
Okay.
Hola, Presidente, Vice Presidenta, Colonel, and members of the Consejo. Hola, mi nombre es Maria Flores y soy trabajadora de limpieza en el edificio Portland. He trabajado para la compañía de relay durante más de un año también. Soy delegada sindical de mi unión. Tal vez me hayan visto a mí o a mis colegas limpiando algunos pisos.
Hello, President Pirtleguine, Vice President Koyama Lane, and council members. My name is Maria Flores. I'm a janitorial worker at the Portland Building. I have worked for Relay for over a year, and I'm also a union delegate. You may have seen me or my colleagues cleaning some of the floors.
Hoy les hablo para pedirles su apoyo en la restauración de la póliza de salario justo de la ciudad. Sé que esta política ha marcado una gran diferencia para muchos de mis compañeros que llevan años trabajando como janitor y personal de seguridad en los edificios de la ciudad.
I'm here today to ask for your support in restoring the city's fair wage policy. I know that this policy has made a significant difference for my coworkers, who have worked for years as janitors and security staff in city buildings.
Entiendo que ustedes tienen el poder de garantizar trabajos con salarios justos. Cuando empecé hace un año, mi salario era de 18.25 por hora, pero gracias a esta política aumentó a 18.90 para mí y mi familia. Esa diferencia ha sido muy importante.
I understand you have the power to ensure jobs with fair wages. When I started a year ago, my wage was 18.25 per hour, but thanks to this policy, increased to 18.90. The difference has been important for me and my family.
Mi sueño es ser dueño de una casa ahora con un salario más justo y un trabajo estable. Gracias a la unión, estoy ahorrando para solicitar un préstamo de casa. Saber que tengo un empleo seguro y un salario digno me da la confianza para planificar un mejor futuro para mi familia.
My dream is to own a home. Now with a fair wage and a stable job thanks to my union, I'm saving to apply for a home loan. Knowing that I have secure employment and a fair wage gives me the confidence to plan for a better future for my family.
La política de salario justo es una manera en que la ciudad puede demostrar que valora y respeta a sus trabajadores. Una compensación justa no solo reconoce nuestros esfuerzos, sino que también nos permite seguir adelante con este trabajo tan importante. Gracias por su tiempo y por su esfuerzo para restablecer esta política. Aprecio su atención y apoyo, Maria Flores.
The fair wage policy is a way for the city to show that it values and respects its workers. Fair compensation not only recognizes our hard work, but also allows us to continue doing this important job. Thank you for your time and for your efforts to reinstate the policy. I appreciate your attention and support, Maria Flores.
Thank you so much for being here, Maria.
Hola, Presidente Pirtleguine, Vice Presidenta Koyama Lane, and members of the Consejo. Mi nombre es Gloria Hernandez y soy lead janitor en el Justice Center. He trabajado ahí para la compañía de Relay durante más de 22 años. También soy miembro de mi unión, SEIU Local 49.
Hello, President Pirtleguine, Vice Chair Koyama Lane, and council members. My name is Gloria Hernandez. I am a lead janitor at the Justice Center. I worked there and for the company Relay Resources for 22 years, and I'm also a member of my union, SEIU Local 49.
Cuando comencé como janitor, ganaba solo $7.85 por hora y no tenía vacaciones pagadas ni seguro médico. Eso cambió cuando Relay me contrató. Finalmente tuve acceso a un seguro médico asequible, un plan de pensión, días festivos pagados, y mejores salarios.
When I first started as a janitor, I earned $7.85 with no paid vacation or medical leave. That changed when Relay Resources hired me. I finally had access to affordable medical insurance, a pension plan, paid holidays, and better wages.
Trabajar en el Justice Center no siempre ha sido fácil, especialmente durante la pandemia. Las protestas hicieron que fuera difícil llegar al trabajo, y en ocasiones incluso me lanzaron basura solo por tratar de entrar al edificio. A pesar de todo, me presenté a trabajar todos los días porque mi trabajo es importante.
Working at the Justice Center hasn't always been easy, especially during the height of the pandemic. Protest made it difficult to get to work, and at times, I even had trash thrown at me for just trying to enter the building. I still showed up every day because my job mattered.
Cuando la ciudad aumentó la política de salario justo a $15 por hora, marcó una gran diferencia para mí y mi familia. Cuando mi esposo no pudo trabajar durante nueve meses, ese aumento salarial me ayudó a pagar la renta y los gastos, algo que de otra manera no habría podido ser posible.
When the city raised the fair wage policy to $15 an hour, it made a huge difference for me and my family. When my husband couldn't work for nine months, that wage increase helped me cover rent and expenses, something I couldn't have done otherwise.
Ahora gracias a esta política de negociación sindical, gano $21.23 por hora y cuento con beneficios sólidos que pude en el benestar de mi familia.
Now, thanks to the city's policy and union bargaining, I make $21.23 an hour with strong benefits that support my family's well-being.
La política de salario justo demuestra que la ciudad valora a trabajadores como yo. Los salarios justos nos ayudan a seguir adelante y hacer este trabajo difícil pero esencial. Les pido que restablecen esta política y continúen apoyando a los trabajadores. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración.
The fair wage policy shows that the city values workers like me. Fair wages help us keep going and do the difficult but essential work. Please restore this policy and continue supporting workers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for being here and sharing your experience, Gloria. Do we have anybody else signed up to testify? That completes testimony. Okay. Counselors, is there any discussion on the ordinance before us?
Yeah, I just want to make a point that at the end of 2024, the transition team brought us, like, felt like bucket loads of code changes, and we had to administratively move into the next, to be in compliance with the charter. It made all of us quite nervous. So thank you, SEIU, for catching this. And I hope the transition team in your office at the administrative level is looking into this, because we did mention that then. I phrased it as we've all moved a lot in life, or at least I have. There's the times I did it right, where I went through everything carefully before I moved. And then there are the times where I didn't do that, the majority, where I had to pack things up quickly, and then when I got to the new place, I had to sort through it. That's what we're doing. So just know that I appreciate SEIU for catching this. Thanks.
Thank you. I put myself in the queue. I just want to thank Counselor Dunphy for bringing this forward to us. SEIU, Yasmin, and your members, both those who are here and the rest of the members who caught this, as Counselor Ryan said, we're digging through some of the things that slipped in there, and it's important that this one was caught in time to make sure that we put it in back in before we do our budget work. I really appreciate all the work that went into this. And Counselor Smith, I appreciate you making the time on your agenda for it.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, counselors, this is a non-emergency ordinance, so it will show up on our next agenda for a vote. With that, we will close Agenda Item 21 and move back to Agenda Item 14, and we are opening Agenda Items 14 and 20 all together in order to have a unified committee staff summary and additions from our chair. We will then take public testimony and see how much time we have for discussion. We'll do discussion on each of these individually. Rebecca, could you please read the agenda items? Agenda Item 14, amend fee schedule for tree permits. Agenda Item 15, adopt rates and charges for water and water-related services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. 16, revise sewer and stormwater charges and fees for FY 2025-26. 17, revise sewer and stormwater rates for FY 2025-26. 18, adopt fees and charges for water system development and water-related services during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. 19, revise transportation fees, rates, and charges for FY 2025-26, and amend transportation fee schedule and fix an effective date. Item 20, amend Portland permitting and development fee schedules to improve cost recovery and service levels for customers. Thank you. Christopher, I believe you have a committee staff summary from the Finance Committee that covers all. Is that seven? All seven of these?
Good afternoon, Madam Presidents, counselors. For the record, my name is Christopher Hare, and I serve as staff to the Finance Committee. The ordinance before you, document number 2025-123, was considered by the Finance Committee on April 1 and was referred to council with a recommendation to pass as amended. The ordinance's document numbers 2025-132 through 137 were considered in the Finance Committee on April 7. Of these, 2025-133 and 2025-135 through 137 were referred to council with a recommendation to pass. 2025-132 and 134 were referred to council with a recommendation to pass as amended. Collectively, these ordinances amend and adopt various city service rates, fees, and charges for fiscal year 2025 through 26. Document number 2025-123 updates the PRK 2.03 fee schedule related to tree services. It increases the fee in lieu of preservation and planting by 4.9 to 5.5% and development review rates by 5%. It also eliminates several non-development permit fees, reduces the administrative review fee under enforcement by 50%, and increases all restoration fees by 5%. 2025-132 establishes water-related service charges with a retail rate increase of approximately 8%. 2025-133 adjusts sewer and stormwater charges, fees, and service development charges. -134 sets sewer and stormwater rates, and -135 adopts updated fees for water system development and related services. The average increase in each of these ordinances is approximately 5%. 2025-136 revises transportation fee schedules. Approximately 75% of all the fees are held constant or increased by less than 5%. Higher increases apply to select fees, especially where fees have not yet reached full cost recovery. 2025-137 updates permitting and development fee schedules, with most fees increasing by about 5%. The committee adopted amendments to document numbers 2025-123, 2025-132, and 2025-134 prior to referring them to full council, and the effects of those amendments are detailed in the full committee staff summary online. The full impact statement on these items includes financial and budget impact analysis, community impacts and community involvement, and economic and real estate impacts. The committee received public testimony on the following items. For 2025-132 relating to water rates and charges, two individuals testified in committee. One individual submitted written testimony prior to committee action, and one individual submitted written testimony after committee action but prior to full council. General themes included acknowledgements of the increase in cost and workload for certain services that require increases in rates, fees, and charges, concern around the continued increase of water costs and affordability, and requests to evaluate striking certain charges and fees as considered for PRK 2.03. For 2025-134 relating to sewer and stormwater rates, one individual submitted written testimony prior to committee action, and general themes included concern around stormwater charges in areas where stormwater services may not currently be provided. For 2025-136 relating to transportation fees, one individual submitted written testimony prior to committee action. General themes included requests to remove certain charges for non-permitted work and administrative review appeals. And finally, for 2025-137 relating to permitting and development fees, one individual submitted written testimony prior to committee action, and the general themes included a request to remove certain charges for non-permitted work and administrative review and appeals. This concludes the committee staff summary.
Thank you for that amazing level of both detail and speed. That was fantastic. Counselor Zimmerman, these came through your committee. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I feel like we just got told these are not the droids you're looking for. So, you know, these fees came through, and there was some discussion on a few of them. The, you know, the tree code, some slight amendments, and I would put it in the diminished amount of changes for the overall budget, but maybe significant for the individual in Portland. There was a little bit of discussion around parking fees. And then the utility rates had an increase that there was some discussion at council or at the committee regarding the difference between the mayor's proposed and what the committee ultimately ended up adopting. And I think to summarize, my colleagues who are on the committee, if I say it wrong, please jump in, but to summarize, fairly significant overall city change to the negative if we would have adopted what the mayor asked for, but on the individual rate pair, it was only about a 50 cent difference. And the idea around that was that most families can take on a 50 cent difference, but the overall system impact was fairly large. And so you did see some changes there. This does not encompass all the fees that exist in the city. This encompasses a set of fees that have to come before ordinance. And I think that's all I'll say, and then we can kind of go into discussion if there's individual questions.
Thank you, counselor. I see a number of folks in the queue for discussion. We do have some public testimony that I'd like to make sure we get to today. Counselor Dunphy, are you looking for a point of clarification that you need before that?
Yeah, just really quickly. Under the revised transportation fees document, Exhibit G is a blank document currently online. There is information available on the draft exhibits attachment. I just wanted to see if anything has changed between draft and final.
That is a great question. Why don't we make sure that staff are looking at that? Looking to Haley to see if she has somebody who can check that for us. Can you repeat which ordinance that was on?
Yeah, absolutely. This is document 2025-136, revised transportation fees, rates, and charges, and amend the transportation fee schedule and fix an effective date, specifically Exhibit G, community events. On my computer, at least, it keeps pulling up as a blank white PDF, but in the draft exhibits, there is a document there that shows fee increases.
We're going to have staff check that and get you an answer and move to the next question so they have an opportunity to do that. Counselor Green, did you have a clarification that you need before public testimony?
I can save it for after. I just wanted to talk about my motivation for the amendment on that rates thing.
Great. And I apologize, Counselor Clark, I jumped over your hand.
No problem, Madam Chair. I just want to mention that, and I don't know, maybe this is preempting your comment, Counselor Green, but we had, in the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, had a pretty robust discussion of the water and sewer fees, just so everybody knows. And I believe those were actually recommended, the increase was recommended by, or the decrease by Mayor Wheeler, not the current mayor. Just be clear on that. And one of the interesting things that everybody should know is that the Water Bureau has a terrific model for having a different rate schedule for low-income people. And it's a really great model, and other bureaus are actually looking at possibly replicating it. So I feel really good about the decision that we made, and we ask Counselor Green to carry it to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that, counselor. Counselor Ryan, is your question clarification needed before public testimony?
I think it will help. It's, for those of us not on the committee, this is our first reading, and the mayor, you worked on this before the mayor's budget, and I know you touched on it briefly, but I think it'll be helpful for the rest of us to true that up, to see the differential between the mayor's budget and what this is before we go to the final vote.
Understood. And I think for folks who didn't catch it before, there are changes that were made here. The mayor's budget made assumptions about the proposed ordinances, and because we changed some of those, we are actually starting slightly out of bounds.
And I get that. I just think we could...
Yeah, we can get you the numbers.
Yeah, exactly. And then I think what was confusing is that when you come in at this hour... And then I think what was confusing is that when you come in at this hour, it looks like specific bureaus are submitting fee schedule increases for council approval, and other bureaus have fees for service schedules that we're not looking at. Is that true?
We do have some bureaus who set fees administratively and other bureaus who are directed to come to council to.
Before I vote, I just want the clarification on why.
And I'll note that one of those that sets fees administratively is parks. So other than the fees for urban forestry, there are other fees we don't see here. Annie, do you have background on why that is? Or is that a question we need to get back to folks on?
I'm sorry, I do not, but I will get back to you on that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Councillor Canal, is your question something we need to answer before public testimony?
I think it might be helpful.
Okay.
It's on the tree permit, 12025-123. Under the financial and budgetary impacts, it talks, it was a little confusing to me. It says that PSF provides funding to urban forestry, and then it says that PPR anticipates reducing and eliminating non-development fees, and that PSF funding will replace the program revenue. My question is, is that referring to the same thing, or is this new PSF dollars? And if so, did we run it, did the committee weigh in on that?
Councillor Zimmerman, would you like to address that?
Yeah, so this did not, that was not a change that came from the committee. That was already brought forward in, I think, the, the PSF committee, their plan, right? Their five-year plan is that they were, they were supplementing future, moving forward, supplementing part of the urban forestry program, and those changes were reflected in what urban forestry submitted to us. The changes that the committee adopted for urban forestry were, my words fairly limited in currently, if you have a violation, it costs a Portlander money just to appeal the violation. And so the committee pulled that back. And there was another, another similar fee in that same realm, and I think that the staff budget report to us put it in the, like, no more than $15,000 a year that that represented in that change. And so it was just going further than what PSF was already reducing that from 50% reduction to 100% reduction on that, that violation review fee. So pretty small, but PSF was part of the program before we got a hold of it. Thank you.
Councillor Smith, is your question something we need to answer before testimony?
No, I can wait, thanks.
Councillor Clark, I see you back here. Is that for after public testimony? Perfect. Rebecca, could you please call up folks who are signed up to testify?
First, for Item 14, Edith Gillis.
Good afternoon, this is Edith Gillis. Can you hear me?
We can, welcome, Edith.
There were many students who worked very diligently, many hours over several years to improve the Portland City Tree Code, and they were patronized, lied to, and betrayed. And this is why sometimes people will then despair of going through the process, and then you'll see them out in the streets angry. One of the ways we stop that is to respect them when they do that. What we need to do is lower the cost for people who are appealing this and lower the cost for people who are caring for trees, but we need to maximize the fines for people who kill, poison, destroy, or log or steal trees, and we need to put more care into increasing our tree canopy. City of Milwaukee has 40% of every lot, every type of land, residential, commercial, public, must be a minimum of 40% tree canopy, and we should have the kind of tree canopy that maximizes cleaning and cooling the air for public health and safety and for reducing our cost later on for sewer and for fire, et cetera. We need to have trees that are going to adjust to the air pollution and the changes in climate, and we need to invest in trees as a way to reduce crime. We need to invest in trees for equity, that East Portland not be hot and a killing place, but that it be a place where people can gather and community and belonging and have hope and, and take care of each other and have crime victim healing instead of anger with hot tempers and, or hot temperature. We need to reduce the cost of people who mean well in having trees and cannot afford it, but we need to increase the cost for those like developers. Ted Wheeler delayed the tree plan so that Schnitzer and others could give him campaign donations after destroying the trees. We need to reverse that.
Thank you for your comments today, Edith.
Next, for Item 15 is Lauren Rosenkrantz.
Lauren, welcome. Go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, good afternoon, elected leaders. My name is Lauren Rosenkrantz. I live in District 1, and I'm here as a voting member and co-chair of the Portland Utility Board, or the PUB. While we appreciated the opportunity to engage with the council committees last month, we felt it was important during this time of transition to highlight some of our priorities for full council consideration. The PUB serves as a community-based advisory board to ensure improved transparency, accountability, and oversight of Portland's utilities. We seek early information sharing and sufficient time for the public's authentic engagement in decision-making, which has been a challenge during this transition with decisions moving quickly and little time for notification, let alone effective engagement. We urge you to, we ask to have a clearer point of contact with council to ensure that we stay informed and engaged when utility policy or budget decisions are scheduled for your consideration. Just as a reminder, we serve as informed representatives of the community, and we ask you to value our time, engaging us early enough to have influence and impact in utility decisions. The PUB centers equity in our considerations, and we believe that every person is entitled to clean and affordable drinking water, healthy communities, and healthy watersheds. We appreciate that through council committees and the proposed budget, that the utility rates proposed today are a return to those from prior financial plans. However, that we, the affordability of current rate payers should remain a priority. The city should also prioritize intergenerational equity on top of that, which requires investments today to avoid pushing infrastructure burdens onto future generations. With that being said, the planned rate increases are not sufficient to maintain services and projects, so are effectively a reduction. And while the PUB supports the bureau's approach to reductions, they're utilizing their only options, we do remain concerned about the impacts and risks on workforce and infrastructure. The plans do not anticipate new challenges, cost pressures facing the utilities with construction escalation costs, years of lower than, lower than projected race, and rate increases, unknown liabilities caused by deferred maintenance, and new costs for charter transition and citywide issues. The utilities must be allowed to update financial plans based on new and increased costs, and impact should be considered in developing future year rate guidance. Affordability remains a core focus, along with ensuring adequate investments versus sustainable and resilient system. Expanding access to target finance, targeted financial assistance is the most effective way to respond to increasing rates and to protect the most vulnerable. We are also concerned of the lack of a citywide equity tool. Too often, equity programs are the first to go during cuts, and I'm running out of time, so I will defer to our written testimony. We just ask that you ensure that every process applies an equity lens so that decisions consider the benefits and burdens of actions. And my colleague Karen Williams has more to say. Thank you.
Next and last is Karen Williams.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. My name is Karen Font Williams. I am the PUB co-chair with Lauren and have been a voting member of PUB since 2019. I live in District 4. As mentioned by Lauren, we do support the 6.33% combined rate increase for the utilities, and in addition, we had supported the bureau's proposed 5% increase to system development charges. For the utilities, the SDCs fund debt payments from investments that have already been made in the system capacity to accommodate increases in demand. These are one-time investments that are calculated based on the direct impact to the system. As community members, we also recognize the housing deficiency in Portland, and we are eager to support justifiable solutions that incentivize sustainable development and address these gaps. However, our board remains concerned about the blanket suspension for all housing development of system development charges without clear metrics on the impacts to the utilities' budgets. We do understand that it is difficult to project the potential financial impact to the utilities' budgets, but we do believe that a loss of these, this one-time revenue can be significant when we already lack significant funding for deferred maintenance and needed infrastructure improvement. As you may have read in the auditor's recent report, they have warned of the risks to the city of underinvestment in routine and preventative maintenance, the backlog of costly and increasingly urgent unfunded needs, and the intergenerational inequity of that neglect. We do support policies encouraging sustainable development that is at a minimum climate neutral, but we do believe that for those who profit from their investments, they should contribute their fair share of the cost to access water services. The city's waivers that encourage affordable housing and their supplemental assistance programs are justifiable investments for all rate payers to fund. We do ask for your reconsideration of the SDC suspension, given the likely trade-offs of reduced funding for maintenance of water systems and watershed restoration for current and future generations. Our board is eager to collaborate with you on these difficult decisions, and we appreciate your feedback, not only on our role, but priorities for the utilities and how we can effectively engage with you. Thank you for your public service, and thanks for listening.
Thank you so much, Karen. Councilors, we had a hard stop at 1:30 today, and it is 1:33. So I am going to close Agenda Items 14 through 20. I am going to recess, I'm saying all of this first before I gavel. I'm going to recess today's meeting to tomorrow at 2 o'clock. We will add time tomorrow before we hear the insight survey to allow us to pick up the appointments that we didn't get to today and hopefully then have time to reopen these fees and get a few of them off the table. What we don't do tomorrow, we will need to open back up on the 21st before we pass our budget, and I will be asking folks to attach emergency clauses to those items at that time so that we can still move them in time for our budget work. We will be reconvening at 2 o'clock as the Budget Committee, and as a reminder, we will also be convening tomorrow as the Budget Committee. That was initially scheduled to convene at 2:45 for the prosper hearing. We will end up pushing that a little bit later in order for us to take up the items that we are carrying over to tomorrow's council meeting at 2 o'clock from today. If that was clear as mud, I'm happy to say it again after we recess the meeting. But for now, I will recess today's council meeting. We will meet back here at 2:04 to ensure that our staff has that full half-hour break for our first convening of the Budget Committee.